Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to our June 13th, 2023 City Council meeting. This is government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council. And according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized. Non-discrimination statement opener for our City Council meeting reads as follows. It's a finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to begin by announcing some names of the City Councilors who are on our call tonight. First of all, here in the Harvard Masters Conference Room is Scott Memmott, who chairs BNF. And because this is largely a BNF budget meeting, we're here in person. And me, Val Gilman, I'm Ward Five City Councilor and Council President. Also, on the Zoom call tonight, first of all, Frank Margiotta, who is our Ward Three City Councilor. We have Jason Groh, who is at large. We have Jeff Worthley, who is at large. We have Council Tracy O'Neal, who is our Ward Two Representative. We have Jamie O'Hara, who is at large. And we have Sean Nolan, who is our Vice Chair of the City Council, and he is our Ward Five City Councilor. I think that, oh, and Tony Gross. Tony Gross is at large. So we have all the Councilors here, and let me just introduce members of City staff. Here with us in the Harvard Masters Conference Room, we have John Dunn, who is our CFO. And we have Kenny Costa, who is our Auditor, and of course, Joanne Sinos, who is our City Clerk. Other members of City staff that are on the call include Jenny Benadec, who is our Executive Director of the Library. And we also have, looks like we have our Harvard Master, who is, no, it's the Harvard Masters Room, I'm sorry. Jill Cahill, who is our CAO, is on the call. Thank you, Jill. And I don't see anyone else that is a member of City staff. I will tell you that we have 27 attendees. Yeah, let me just scroll here to see if we have any more members of City staff.
Did you get Nancy?
Excuse me?
Did you get Nancy?
Oh, Nancy Pappas, who is our head up our Assessor's Office. Thank you. Welcome. Okay. So we're going to begin the meeting tonight with oral communications. Your first order of business, Madam Clerk. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the Council, state their problem without debate. And the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a coffee shall be forwarded to the City Council. Persons speaking on oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Tonight, I am the timekeeper, but Joanne is kindly going to do the timing with three minutes each after you introduce your name and address. And then at two minutes and 50 seconds, she is going to show me the time, and I'm going to say 10 seconds. And we ask that you end on time. We certainly appreciate that. And I want to be clear that the matters on oral communications are matters that are not on the agenda tonight. So we're not taking public comments at this point on matters that are budget items or things that are on the consent agenda that you might see. Those are not included in public comments. So we encourage the first person that would like to speak to matters on the agenda. I see some hands raised. I can, Council Nolan. Yep. Are you good?
I can speak.
Oh, go ahead, Council Nolan. You have the floor. I can see your hand, and it's not moving. I think you're frozen. Council Nolan, we can't, you are the only person frozen right now in this call. So can you try to log? Okay. Can I hear you now? I can't, we can't hear you. And you look, you're frozen. Would you be kind enough to log off and come back on and see if we can get you a better connection? Can you hear me, Council Nolan? Okay. I'm going to continue with the meeting right now, and we're on oral communications. And I would like to ask the first person that has signed on to introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to talk to us for matters not on the agenda. Charlie Crowley. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Yes, my name is Charles Crowley. I live at 19 Biskey Head Point. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to reiterate the requests you've heard for water, deep water on Biskey Head Point and Rust Island. I want to particularly address your attention towards the Biskey Head Point side. I live at 19 Biskey Head Point, directly adjacent to Heron's Way Marina. Heron's Way Marina docks 50 boats, and they're pretty good-sized boats. You can guess about 10,000 gallons of fuel. Right at the head of the Marina is a water hydrant. The Oval Fire Hydrant has on it a big ring collar that says "Out of Service." And that has been out of service for 35 years since that line was run. They ran the line, the Marina, the original developers ran the line, but never hooked it up. The hookup point is across the highway, directly across the highway. There is a fire hydrant at Lobsterland. We've been trying for 35 years. That has not been hooked up. That is a fire hydrant on a public way. We would like to have it hooked up. It's a safety issue. It should be done. Second issue is, until such times it's done, we would like to ask the fire department prepare a plan for how they would fight a fire on Biskey Head Point. So that is my specific request, that the mayor instruct the fire department to prepare a plan for how they would fight a fire on Biskey Head Point. I'd like to point out that when I asked the fire department how they would fight a fire here, this was at the time when I purchased my house, when they were doing the inspection of my fire alarms, they said, quote, "We would bring the marshmallows." It's not an adequate response. Secondly, we would like to ask that the fire department actually run a fire drill. This is a tremendous amount of running hoses, pumps, all sorts of things. But as they're doing training for other things, we'd like to ask that they actually run a fire drill for how they would get to it. They really kind of say they don't know how. So let's actually have them run a fire drill. Second specific request is to ask that they do that, they run a drill. Third specific request is that the fire, that Heron Marina is in the process right now of building a new pier. The pier has none of their state-required firefighting infrastructure that is required on all piers. This is, this means stand pipes every 150 feet. Well, they're not putting it in there because there's no water. Well, darn it, we want to get water. And when we get water, we want to have that adequate infrastructure in place. So we're asking that absolutely no waivers be given on that permit, and that the fire department enforce state regulations that they put in that stuff. All right, I appreciate your time. I know you're busy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Next person. And we have Council Nolan is back, and it looks like he's not frozen anymore. Council Nolan, can you give me a hands up, a thumbs up, that you can hear us loud and clear? Okay, Council Nolan is frozen again, so. Council Nolan, if you can hear us, maybe you could call in for that, to get your connection back. Okay, he's going to try again. So next person to come into the call? Patty Amro. Welcome. Could you introduce yourself? And you have up to three minutes to speak to us for matters not on the agenda.
Hello, can you hear me?
Very loud and clear.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, Patty Amro, 14 Myrtle Square. As I was walking downtown today to get my Gloucester encounters copies, I have been noticing a lot of places in the city that's unkept. And I know this is our 400, so I'm wondering, are we getting things ready for this year, for next year, for the 400th? Because I'm just confused. Like, when I was at Stage Fort Park on Memorial Day, the grass was up to my shins. It hadn't been mowed in a while, and that was Memorial Day. Now, I went by the library to get my beach stickers, and the whole library has not been weeded for a long time, and it really doesn't need much. But to let it look like that, I just am wondering about, we do have all kinds of tourists, and we do things for tourists in our city, as we know. And so I'm wondering, this is the 400th, and some things need to be done that isn't being done. I'm just, I'm just wondering about this, why these things are not being done. I was at the Oval again today. I put a C-Click Fix in a couple months ago, looking for mulch. It really does need the mulch. There's all bricks showing on the side and everything, and it really does need some care. We could easily put a park and recreation commission together. I'm not sure why we don't want to do this. It only takes one city official from the DPW, an hour a month, and then five people from each ward. Now, I've already got, I would say, I would stand up for my ward in Ward Two, and Denise Fisucci already said she'll stand up for her ward over on Bond Street. I'm not sure what that is. I'm sure we can get three more people to get on this commission. We need to do something, for number one, for the safety, not even because it just looks horrible and it's unkept. But the fact that if we're celebrating our 400th and Stage Fort Park is so in construction, I'm just not getting the timing of it all. So I know I'll get another letter in the mail that will say, everyone's working hard. And I know you're working hard. I'm working hard, too. I'm probably going to have to go down and weed whack Joseph Memorial again, because that never gets done. And so I will stay on that. I do what I can do. But that's all I can do. I mean, so somebody needs to step up to the plate, please, for the safety of people. And also, people are asking about the sprinkler at Burnsfield. Everybody asks about the sprinkler at Burnsfield. If we could please get that going this year for the people in the inner city, it would really be so kind. I know the weather doesn't look like we need it, but eventually we will have warm weather. So thank you very much. And as you can hear, my granddaughter in the background. Now, before, I used to do things for my son, and now I'm doing things for my granddaughter. So let's do it for our young people and make our parks and playgrounds and open spaces safe for everyone to enjoy, residents and the tourists who come to our city. Also, State Park was, okay, State Park was painted. Please have our sidewalk, crosswalks painted in everywhere, the whole city, because we do need it. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Next person. Linda McCaristin. Linda, would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us? Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay. Linda McCaristin, 16 Quarry Street. And I just want to repeat something that I mentioned, I don't know, I don't remember when it was. But I would like to have included in our list of protections, you just named it, the human rights, whatever it is, the list of everyone who's going to be protected from discrimination in the city. I'd like to include persons viewpoint discrimination or viewpoint as well as content. Those two seem to go together, but content and viewpoint also were both included in the Barron case recently. I think the content was that Mrs. Barron was asserting that the Consular Selectment had not been following the open meeting law. Anyway, I would like to see content and viewpoint included among those human rights protections for us in Gloucester when we are speaking, when we're speaking in public or when we're speaking to our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next person with your hand raised. Peg Russell, welcome. If you'd introduce yourself and your address, you have three minutes to speak to us.
Hi, yes. 65 Middle Street as a resident and 67 Main Street as a business owner. I've asked quite a few people downtown to participate. Last week, we discussed the National Grid work downtown, and I am pleased to report and very grateful to everybody, including all of the City Councilors, Jill Cahill, all the folks that I've been in touch with over the last many weeks about it. And we've gotten actually a stay of execution, as I've referred to it. And it sounds like by Friday, they're going to get off the street. But as I understand it from several other council members, that Mr. O'Hara, Mr. Worthley, Ms. O'Neal, Mr. Gross, and others, that there is a ordinance proposal that there would be a no-construction of a non-essential or non, you know, emergency nature for any downtown construction or, you know, citywide during the months, critical months for business and for tourism from May 15th till September 15th. And I absolutely support that. I think many of the people we've spoken to over the many days are on board with that. It seems kind of elemental to me, considering our city's peak season. And going back to the previous caller about Stage Fort Park, yes, I was there yesterday doing some photo promotions for my store. That looked a mess. I joked with Counselor Gross and Ms. Gilman on an email thread this morning that they've had 399 years to prepare for the 400th anniversary of this beautiful city and woefully unprepared, I'm afraid. I think that having building materials scattered about the city on the main streets and in our beautiful parks, Stage Fort Park, where children could trip on them, where there's like literally a sign that says, "Do not enter" at the, you know, sort of mouth of Stage Fort Park, leading down a beautiful path on a beautiful summer day, to have that kind of, you know, building and construction debris scattered about looks really unprepared for this momentous occasion. But I will say and want to compliment members of the council, et cetera, for getting on this ordinance concept. I think it's genius, and I think it's long overdue, and I'm hoping that other downtowners will weigh in. I had very significant difference in sales between the construction being right parked in front of my store and the following week. I will share with the group that Thursday, June 1st, when they began the work, and I had a backhoe in front of my store, my sales for the day were $109.50 in peak season. The following Thursday, over $1,500, which is what we need and expect during June and the months leading up to, you know, the summer months, the tourist months. I will conclude by saying thank you very much to everybody who rallied to the cause. GDT ran an article about it today. That was very helpful. And I hand it over to various other members of downtown who apparently also have called in. So I'm pleased for the attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak to the Council for matters not on the agenda? Pam Steele, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have three minutes to talk to us about matters not on the agenda. Welcome.
Hi. Hope everyone's well. Pam Steele, 10 Pilot Hill. It's interesting that this is brought up, because I've been thinking about it for a long time. And I think where the problem lies is when they got rid of the Parks and Recreation Department. Just keep putting more on the plate of the DPW. And every time I get off, I think, how could anybody humanly possible manage all that you guys are putting on the DPW? I think they're fabulous. I don't know, you know, the ins and outs, but it just seems like common sense to me that it's too much. It's just too much. I know that a couple of summers ago, I brought people over to see the West Parish, and the weeds were up to the windows. So we really do need a Parks and Recreation. I could write up something and submit it if you would support it. We could maybe get it through. It would be great. Got a lot of parks. We have a beautiful city, and we really need to take better care of it. Thank you for your time. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate it. Next person with their hand raised. We have Mary Ann Boucher. Welcome, Mary Ann, your name and address. And you have three minutes to chat with us for matters not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue. First of all, I'd like to thank Val Gilman, who sat in for Greg Berger last week. I one-phone call and email to each one of you in regards to the memorial bricks at the Maxwell Parsons Playground were being dismantled. Friday night, the farewell event, people were taking bricks. A couple days later, a school dismissed while children were on the playground. Members of the school came out and were trying to dismantle the bricks. Whether or not this can take place or could not take place, it was very disheartening to watch it happening in front of children. One child even asked, "They're taking away our school. Now they're going to take away our playground." There's a lot of confusion. There's a lot of rumors as to what will be happening with the Maxwell Parsons Playground. I have an email here. I started March 7th, 2021, to Mr. Lummis. I've asked several times of the school committee, I've asked several times of the City Council and our mayor to please let us know what the plan is moving forward, because I knew this would happen. We had a lot of crying people at East Gloucester School today. While some may be very excited to see a new school, there were a lot of very sad neighbors and parents and children alike. And I would ask, moving forward, if we could have a clear picture on what is going to take place for the Lieutenant Arthur Maxwell Parsons Playground, as well as what will take place on the site of the East Gloucester School. I sit here with a newspaper dated December 14th, 2020, and it talks about how the property of the East Gloucester School will be placed under the protection of Article 97 of the Amendments of the Constitution of the Commonwealth to be preserved for municipal park and open space purposes. And then under that, it says, "No curveballs." Well, I don't think any balls have even been thrown, because we have no idea what's going on. I think we've been wonderful neighbors. I've lived next to that school, the Director Butter, for 62 years. We've been wonderful, wonderful neighbors to the school. And we just ask that the school and the city respect the neighbors and give us the same treatment that we have, that we have given to the school for all of these years. We love that school. We love our neighborhood. It was a great community meeting place. Just so many things that we will lose. And we hope that the Maxwell Parsons Playground is not going to be dismantled. As some people have said, we're very concerned about that. We're very concerned. As, I want to thank Val Gilman for putting a stop to the bricks being dismantled. And the children, please, for the children, can we just tell the adults what's going to happen so that we can move forward and we can all be at ease? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Appreciate it. Anyone else have their hands raised? We have Jeff Carr. Jeff, welcome. If you'd introduce yourself and your address, you have three minutes to talk to us for matters not on the agenda.
Hey, thank you very much, Councilor. I just want to thank everybody for hearing me last week, the last month meeting regarding Eastern Avenue and the construction that was going on. I understand tonight is something on the agenda about, you know, making some streets workable after September 15th and before May 15th. Totally supporting of it. One of the things I think is very important for the future of paving of construction is the DPW Director needs to talk to the police. I think it's important that the police are involved when there's construction that is within a quarter of a mile, such as Eastern Avenue, East Main Street, and Schoolhouse Road. We can't have that again. It creates too much nightmare of traffic. If something's done in East Gloucester, West Gloucester, down in Val Gilman's neighborhood, that's one thing. But when you put three construction projects, and that's okayed by the DPW Director, that's just wrong in one neighborhood. So I like the idea of having a restriction, but I also would like the idea that perhaps the DPW Director can get together with the police chief when this stuff is going on and possibly come up with a better idea on when things should be done. Police do traffic, DPW does construction. They got to communicate with each other. So thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you, Jeff, for being on the call. We appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak to the Council for up to three minutes on matters not on the agenda? Arwin Severance, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. I think.
That would be great.
Thank you. So my name is Arwin Severance. I own the bookstore downtown at 61 Main Street. I wanted to be here tonight to share my thoughts and concerns and views on the work that's been going on on Main Street and adjoining streets these past few months. I've been speaking with Peg from Pop Gallery, who just spoke. And I have a lot of the same thoughts as Peg, but and I believe a lot of the businesses, both retail, dining, I know many residents are feeling very similar. The work that's been going on since March has been extensive and extremely detrimental to our downtown. Like I've heard a few times from a few different people, Gloucester is celebrating its 400th anniversary this year. We have so many events and celebrations that are coming up. We really need to have a welcoming, safe, beautiful downtown Gloucester to share with everyone that's coming to help us celebrate. And I do appreciate that the work with National Grid has been halted as of Friday. And I think some, I think everyone that has returned emails and come to our stores to talk to us about it and worked really hard to get this work halted. I really appreciate everyone that's helped out with that. I would also support this proposed ordinance to protect main areas and town from any major works that would happen between May 15th and September 15th. Like Peg said, you know, we have a few months to really kind of, to do our business. And it gets us through the winter so that we can stay here on Main Street. We've been here almost 50 years. The bookstore, it'll be 50 in 2025. So it's imperative that, you know, that we are heard. Communication was another area that I would love to touch upon. I believe it's a crucial thing that we need to work on. We weren't told about any of this stuff that was happening, and it would have been helpful if we could have prepared with our staffing, with our hours, with letting our customers know. You know, I had people trying to walk in the bookstore, and there was literally pebbles coming at them. It was really unsafe. So that's kind of all I really wanted to talk about, too. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak and for all the work that everyone has done to get this work halted so that we can really enjoy this summer. That's supposed to be one of our biggest ones yet with the 400th celebrations that are happening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Arwin. Happy 50 years of business, too. That's pretty exciting. Anyone else like to speak to the Council for matters not on the agenda? Gregory Doe, welcome. If you'd introduce yourself and your address, you have three minutes to speak to us. Um, anyone else like to speak to the Council for matters not on the agenda? Gregory Doe, welcome. If you'd introduce yourself name, and you have three minutes to talk to us for anything that's not on the agenda.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Gregory Doe, seven West Mountain Road. I believe tonight's vote is on the approval of city budget. That's pretty much a done deal. So I'm probably beating a dead horse on some of these subjects. As you know, my concerns about water service and delivery and fire protection, but also the beauty and operation of our city. I've asked and received insufficient replies to the mayor's office on how our city is dealing budgeting and approving water installation and choosing roads that we decide to put water lines down. When and who approves this work? And how, how can um, Becker Circle, Rust Island, all the other neighborhoods get on the list? Becker Circle's been trying to do it for twenty plus years and really have gotten no results at all, this lip service. Uh, I've also asked for our action report from the fire department and how they're going to handle fires up here in my neighborhoods. Twenty years ago, I asked for this. Never heard any answer from it. Move on to the beauty of city. What's going on with State Full Park? As you know, um, we all, we all should be embarrassed to mess up there. Supply delay, COVID delay, stop making excuses. It should never have been started or it should have been finished last fall. Now someone's painted the sidewalk a beautiful maroon color. What were they thinking? Or is that a third lane? I'm not quite sure. Does anybody know? Or is that a parking lane? The boulevard pavement is a mess, potholes, everything. The West End, while you've heard enough about that. Main Street, what were they thinking on that? Who made that decision to dig up Main Street? Who makes these decisions? They remove and they historic pavers, not historic in the old sense, but made the neighborhood very beautiful. They lay down asphalt. Who makes these decisions? And now they decided to stop construction. The businesses are very happy. I understand that. But they've also left the sidewalks a mess, asphalt, steel plates in the road, temporary asphalt. Really, what's going on? Uh, what else do I got?
You have.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Good night.
Good night. Anyone else like to speak to us? Caroline Harvey, welcome. Would you introduce yourself and your dress? You have three minutes to talk to us about anything that's not on our agenda tonight.
Hi, and thank you. I'm Caroline Harvey. I'm the co-owner of Dogtown Books at one thirty-two Main Street. I just wanted to be another voice uh, to echo that the construction is quite disruptive. We are also, um, we also face the giant uh, construction that's happening in the old Y building. So just to alert the council and anyone listening, um, as that construction has been happening in the back, we've had our internet, internet and phone lines cut clear through twice, um, and also the basement was flooded. Um, and also a lot of shaking and um, vibrating, of course, in the store, which does create an environment in which things fall. So that's quite unsafe. Um, and with the flooding, we then had the construction in the back, National Grid out front, as well as hoses to pull the water out of the basement. It's um, almost paralyzing in its shockiness, just how laughably impossible it is for people to get down Main Street. Of course, we've all been talking at you, so I don't know what you've already planned or what might be in motion, but I am hopeful through the efforts of our other retail neighbors um, and city councillors and, and staff that there will be some pause happening on this. I do think it, it truly is a, a trifold of it's dangerous. Um, it's putting our businesses to sleep. I echo Peggy what you said about the dramatic decrease in sales when no one can get in your store. Um, versus a week when there's no construction and the numbers are where they should be. And, and also it's, we're at the point where we just have to do the best we can to look like a functioning city for all these tourists that we've invited to show up this summer. You know, you tell the universe your plans and, and it becomes quite funny. We're, we're not expecting perfection, but whatever efforts can be made to pause the um, digging up and intense explosive vibration of Main Street as well as as those things pause, um, my, whatever mild cleanup needs to happen. So it doesn't look like an abandoned construction site. It looks like a project that's on pause. Here's hoping we can do that, and also here's hoping you'll communicate with us uh, kind of the progress of that and what, if any, support we can offer besides just telling you what the problems are. So thanks for listening and thanks for all you do.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak to us for matters not on the agenda, public comments? Seeing none. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is confirmation of new appointments.
Um, I'll ask that our O N A Chair, Sean Nolan, takes us through this part of the agenda. Thank you, Sean. Sean, you are muted.
So for confirmations of new appointments, we do have, uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Health isn't working, but we can hear you.
Okay.
Health isn't moving, so, but we can still hear you, so.
All right. Doing the best I can. Besides, if, if this doesn't work, I'll be coming down to see you guys at the uh, office.
You can join us.
So we do have a bunch of people for a great committee. Um, and um, some of these people will not be here. Uh, if you like, I can read them all at once and do a unanimous uh, yes or no, or I can read them individually. Um, it's up to uh, the, the pleasure of the council. They're all known to us.
Um, I, I think I would like to have you read each one individually, just.
Not a problem.
Insist on it. Thank you.
So our first one is gonna be for John Bell. On a motion by Council Majota, second by Council O'Hara, the Orders Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council appoint John Bell to the Lindsay Coolidge Philanthropy Award Committee term to expire continuous with the mayor. Nice move.
Second.
A motion made by Council Nolan, and I think it was seconded by Council O'Hara. Is there a discussion, councilors? Um, Council O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. Um, I I looked up on the city website to see what the Lindsay Coolidge Philanthropy Award Committee was, and it's not on the city website. And I know that Lindsay Coolidge um, is part of the YMCA, correct? So.
Uh, Lindsay, Lindsay Coolidge is a, a person, uh, sorry, through chair.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Uh, Lindsay Coolidge is a person that has exceeded in well amounts of philanthropy in the city. We have as a city council, it's not a city um, like vote or a matter that you'll find in the charter. It's an award that's given to someone for excellency service in the city to help out civic needs. So it's, it's not a charter thing. It's something that is, is done by the council and the administration to give someone an award for their work with the city of Gloucester, and this committee would recommend someone that's been proposed for it. So same as the Abkambadi Award, uh, which is another prestigious award. This is an award that we give. It's not, it's not a, a, a city type charter thing. It's an award.
Okay, thank you.
Just, yeah. Yes, and just, just to add to that, it's, it's, it's part of our Gloucester Code of Ordinances, but to, to Council Nolan's point, it's not on, it's not in the city charter, but it's an ordinance. Um, any discussion on this, uh, Council Worley?
Sure. I'd just like to say, um, I've worked with John Bell before. When I was in the council, he was mayor. We both ran for mayor at the same time. I have the utmost respect for him. I think he'd be excellent on this committee. And again, to Council O'Neill's question, the committee is recognizing people who are philanthropic and donate to various causes in the community. So um, this, this community is made up of a number of individuals who are connected to those people and those causes, and I look forward to the recommendations.
Thank you, Council. Any further discussion, councilors? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Absolutely.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes, for John Bell.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worley.
Yes, for John Bell as well.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Council Nolan. Thank you.
All right. So the next order of business is uh, the committee recommendation on a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council O'Hara. The Orders Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council appoint Farrah Courtney to the Lindsay Coolidge Philanthropy Award Committee term to end continuous with the mayor. Nice move.
Second.
A motion made by Council O'Hara. Is there a discussion, councilors? Um, seeing none. Um, roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
And Council Worley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Council Nolan.
Just on a motion by uh, yes.
I'm, I'm gonna step out. I have to recuse myself in this vote.
Is she related?
I don't know the last name.
Okay, well, you already.
It's a distant relationship, but.
Thank you. Go ahead, Council Nolan.
On a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council O'Hara, the Orders Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the City Council appoint Sarah Grow to the Lindsay Coolidge Philanthropy Award Committee term to end continuous with the mayor. Nice move.
Second.
A motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Is there a discussion, councilors? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Accused.
Oh, sorry, I'm abstaining. Uh, Council Majota.
Absolutely.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one abstained. Next order of business, Council Nolan.
On a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council O'Hara, the Orders Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council appoint Richard Dick Wilson to the Lindsay Coolidge Philanthropy Award Committee term to end continuous with the mayor. Nice move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Absolutely.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worley.
Yes.
Zero opposed. Thank you, Council Nolan. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the consent agenda.
Councilors, would anyone like to pull any matter off the consent agenda? And um, if we decide that we want to um, pull one of these off, we need to remember that we are not discussing the merits of any of these. What we are doing is we are just um, talking about referring it. So um, would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Council O'Neill.
Um, I would like to um, remove and discuss the um, well, just remove the city council meeting of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, only because I haven't had a chance to read the minutes and the special city council of June sixth as well. I have not had a chance to uh, read those two things.
Okay, so June twenty-sixth and that second, no, what, May, May twenty-third. May twenty-third.
And June sixth.
And, and June sixth. Okay, um, anyone else like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Uh, seeing none. Is there a motion to um, approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion made by Council Grow, I believe, and seconded by Council Worley. Um, roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Yes.
And so now we're back to the minutes of uh, May twenty-third and June sixth. Let me just circle where those fall on this. Okay, thank you. So the special city council meeting of June sixth. And um, that was the one where, that was the public hearing. Correct? And it was referrals were on that? Okay, and, and then the other one is um, May twenty-third, which was a city council meeting. Um, okay, so um, I guess we'll, we will have to vote this, and um, and what we need is a majority vote to approve this, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so um.
Waterman of chair.
Go ahead, Council Worley.
Is it, is it possible to put these on the following consent agenda to give Council O'Neill time to read the minutes?
I, I'm not comfortable with that, Council Worley. I think that it's our responsibility to come prepared to have read these. And um, I think there's a lot of business that derives over those approved minutes, so I'm gonna ask that we vote on this. Um, so um, um, I move to um, to approve the minutes of June sixth special meeting as well as the minutes of May twenty-third, and I so move.
Second.
Um, motions made by me and a seconded by Council Worley. Um, is there a discussion? Roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
No.
Council O'Neill.
No.
Council Worley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Seven in favor, two opposed, Council O'Hara and Council O'Neill. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of duty.
And I will ask Council Gross, who um, led that meeting, to um, to lead the next part of our meeting on the B and F report of June eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Um, our first order of business was um, the the member item from the CFO for um.
Council, Council Gross, I've made an error. I'm sorry. May I interrupt you?
Yes, please.
I'm going to interrupt you. I'm not gonna ask you if I may interrupt you. I'm sorry. Um, so we have a a B and F consent agenda. Correct? Um, and I, um, so I will ask if anyone would like to remove anything from the B and F consent agenda. Seeing none. Um, I'll, Council O'Neill, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to remove item seven. Uh, member item from CFO, an amount of three hundred thousand dollars regarding the school grease traps.
Okay, would anyone else like to um, remove anything on the consent agenda? Um, so um, so before we vote the consent agenda, um, having removed item seven, Council Gross, if you could just read the matters that we are going to be approving, just the one line item, that would be very helpful. going to be approving, just the one line item, that would be very helpful.
First, I'd also like to speak that we had a great presentation on the TIF, the tax finance incentive increment, rather. And I really encouraged, there was, I'll not do it justice by trying to summarize it. Council Worthley asked quite a few excellent questions. But since it's probably going to be one coming before us really soon, I would advise everybody to watch that. I certainly learned some very good pieces of information. So if you don't watch any of the other of the BNF meeting, I would definitely say, watch that. It's in the, it's in, it's the second item. And I highly encourage that. It really is critical to making the decisions that we need to make and be informed. So, starting out, we have memorandum from CFO number twenty-two-three SA dash twenty-six, in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. We're purchasing new voter equipment. We had an excellent presentation by our city clerk. I am going to narrate a little bit on this because, you know, there was some talk about we had, we did not have reliable voting machines, and the ones that we've had have been, they were refurbished when we bought them. And, and new ones actually would cost back in the day, cost seventy-five thousand dollars if we had bought new ones and not refurbished ones, so. But it's time. I know last election, we had machine failures, so we have to get new tabulators. The second, number two, is memorandum from police chief, twenty-two-three SBT seventeen, in the amount of twenty-one thousand. Plus, number twenty-two-three SBT eighteen, in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars. And account number, twenty-two-three SBT nineteen, in the amount of five thousand dollars, and twenty-two-three SBT twenty, in the amount of five thousand sixty-nine dollars, seventy-seven cents. And that brings us to the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars for new pontoons for the police boat. So, and that'll bring that boat, which is, we just bought a new one for over three hundred, it was like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, for twenty-one thousand dollars, we're gonna have another brand-new boat, pretty much. Memorandum from the fire chief, number twenty-two-three SBT twenty-one, in the amount of fifteen hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents, and that's for background checks from the police department, for new hires. And then we have memorandum from the CAO requesting permission to pay twenty-two invoices with twenty-two-three funds. I'm not going to go through all those, but that was some minor funds that needed to be, that fell, fell through the cracks. We have these that they come through. I've been surprised how few we've had, actually. So they pretty much have kept right on top between Kenny and John. And then we have memorandum from Gloucester Public Schools, CFO requesting to pay FY twenty-two invoices with FY twenty-three funds. That was for that was during COVID and the I forget what they call it, the payroll funds. And anyway, there was a lot of fraudulent claims on unemployment. And that were outside. They were not our employees making fraudulent claims. It was, it was scammers coming in. We had to wait until all that got settled and figured out who, which, what was real, what wasn't. And so now we have to go back and pay these legitimate unemployment claims. Then we have a memorandum from Gloucester Public Schools, CFO, number twenty-two-three SBT twenty-two, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. And that's reimbursing the police department for one of the resource officers. They chose that this is the middle school resource officer, so that's, it's built into their budget. It's just a matter of transferring the funds from that budget to this budget. We pulled off number seven. And then the final one is memorandum from the CFO to pay FY twenty-two invoices with FY twenty-three funds. And that was also just a very minor thing for a a law firm that, that works for multiple cities on the opioid settlements. So. And therefore, I saw move on that consent agenda. I guess it's already been moved and seconded, hasn't it?
Right, with the exception of item seven. So, who moved it the first time? Council Gross?
Actually, did it get moved?
I, I'm not sure.
I don't think it did. So I so move.
All right, thank you. Council Gross, seconded by Council Worthley. Further discussion on this consent? Council Grow.
I just want to, I know Tony didn't intend this, and I, and, but I wanted to make a clarification that when he said unreliable voting machines, that's a a mechanical issue, not an issue of whether or not votes are being properly counted. That the clerk's office has protocols in place to ensure that every vote is properly counted, and this is about replacing machines that are out of date and beyond, beyond repair. Right. Not about whether or not we have good elections, which we do have.
Correct. It had nothing to do with the election integrity. It was that the tabulators broke down, and they were either working or they weren't. So they had to be counted, and, and, you know, they had to be counted by hand. They had to bring out another. It, it's a whole thing. You have to call the attorney generals. It's a whole thing to do all this stuff. So we need machines to be able to tabulate the votes.
Great, thank you, Council Worthley and then Council Majota.
Thank you. I'd just like to run down, I think Council Gross did a great job narrating that. Just want to emphasize a few things. This is Council Gross said. These machines had a life expectancy of ten years. Where in year thirteen, they're due to fail. But because we're getting these newer ones, that won't be the case. This is a good move, and it's an investment. And these are also warranted, and there's a software that comes with it and maintenance, so it's a good, it's a good decision. There are a couple of bookkeeping things. I think that the phrase Council Gross said, where a few things slip through the crack. I think a lot of it's just timing, right? The year ends at a certain point, and then there is bills that are still due that are responsible for the prior fiscal year or the future fiscal year. So that's a lot of the bookkeeping stuff. And then the last thing on, oh, so I'm sorry, the other one we took off the consent agenda. Okay, so I'm, I'm in support of these.
Any further discussion, Council Majota?
Did Council O'Neil give a reason why she was removing number seven, or does she need to?
I'm gonna go back to that after we vote on ones that we have in front of us. Thank you. Anyone else have any discussion matters? Okay, on the motion, which is to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item seven. Roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yeah, good work.
Council Majota.
Yes, thank you.
Memard.
Yes, and thank you, Tony, for covering.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Now we're going to go back to Council O'Neil's. So Council O'Neil has asked that we may move memorandum from CFO and number two thousand twenty-three SA twenty-seven, in the amount of three hundred thousand school grease traps. Let's see, should we, I guess, we should probably make the motion and then, and then do this one as an individual vote.
Correct.
Okay, so Council Gross, would you make the motion? And then we will, we'll let Council O'Neil speak first on it. If you would.
Okay, you want me to make it to have it came out of committee, or do you want me to make it as it's on the consent agenda?
As it came out of committee. Any recommendation?
Yes. The Budget and Finance Subcommittee recommended to the city council approve the supplemental appropriation twenty-two-three SA twenty-seven, in the amount of three, three hundred thousand dollars from the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance Account, as noted, to Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund Grease Traps Building Improvements Account, as noted, for the purpose of making repairs and improvements of the kitchen grease traps at the high school and the middle school. I should have said originally that it was recommended two to zero.
Right, with two in favor.
And I saw move.
Second.
We have, Council Gross has moved it, Council Worthley has seconded it, and as he said, it was two in favor, zero opposed. And the person opposed was Council Memard, who was absent. So thank you.
I was absent.
So he was absent. Exactly, thank you. So Council O'Neil, well, well, let's just think about how we should do this. Council O'Neil, you've objected, so why don't we allow you to go first, and then we'll ask for an for a narrative from Council Gross.
Okay, thank you. It just seems an exorbitant amount of money. And three hundred thousand dollars, it just seems like an exceptional amount of money, and I it's for repairs and improvements to the kitchen grease traps at the high school and middle school. I don't know what it entails. I don't know who is doing it. Is that the DPW doing it, or is it an outside contractor doing it? I don't know what's going on. So three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to me. So I would just like to know who's doing it, and why it costs so much money.
So I would ask if our CAO would like to speak to that, and or CFO, John Dunn, would like to speak to that. You have the floor.
Thank you. Excuse me. So this is a, actually a replacement of the existing grease traps at both the high school and the middle school. So it is it is a removal of the current grease traps and the installation of new ones. This was done through a bidding process. The replacement construction company came in at two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. There's another twenty-five thousand that will be consumed by the OPM to direct the project. And we rounded it up because, you know, invariably in something like this, if you're digging into concrete, there will be some additional costs as we move along. We appropriate this within one of the stabilization funds. So even though we're appropriating three hundred thousand dollars, if we spend less than that, that stays within the stabilization fund.
Council O'Neil.
Thank you. Just because this says repairs and improvements to the grease traps, it doesn't say replacing and installing new ones.
So I will take responsibility for not specifying specifically what it was.
Okay, so both the high school and middle school get all new grease traps?
They will get all new grease traps, yes.
And how many, how many grease traps in each school? Is it one big grease trap, or is it a couple of? How many grease traps we talking about?
I, I can't answer that question, counselor, but they are fairly substantial, given the size of the cafeterias in both buildings.
Okay.
Or Council Worthley, you were at the meeting. Do you have anything to add?
Sure, I'd be happy to add unless Council Gross wants to.
Council Gross actually was chairing the meeting, so thank you. I'll ask him to speak first, and then we'll ask you.
Actually, CFO Dunn just gave probably a more in-depth description than what, what we had had at BNF, so I really don't have much to add. It is there probably is a couple in each kitchen, and they're probably underneath the floors. If we're talking about replacing concrete, then they're definitely underneath the floors. So it has to be done in the summertime. It's going to be a compressed timeframe, and I'm sure that's why it was bid so high.
Thank you. Council Worthley and then Council O'Hara.
Yeah, I'd be happy to add to this, and I'm not going to disagree with Council O'Neil. That's a big, it's a big number. You know, we delay, delay, delay on, on everything in this community, just because there's something else more urgent. And I like to see this not as just a cost, but an investment, right? Because if, if the school cafeteria goes down for one reason or another, you gotta close school. And then everything else falls from there. And so this has been identified as a project paid for from the Building Stabilization Fund, so this isn't money that could be used for other kinds of things. This is exactly what this money is designed for. And so my hope is obviously, is prevailing wage. It's one of the challenges with doing any municipal work, is it's, it's prevailing wages, and it's bid so that the lowest bidder gets the job, but it's still prevailing wage, so it's, it's expensive. But I see it as an investment, and my hope is that it's done on budget, under budget, and on time, and done quickly, so hopefully the OPM can justify that extra expense by reducing the costs. So that's why I supported it.
Thank you. Council O'Hara.
Thank you. I like to agree the three hundred thousand grease traps are a maintenance item. As far as you clean them, they're a box in the, in the ground. It's a water, water grease separator. The grease, the trap itself is cleaned of its grease. They should be coated. They, they should never fail. And I'm shocked that you have two facilities built in two different eras that are failing at the same time. It's just, it's, it's a maintenance item. It's similar to painting a hull of a boat. You you clean them out. If they need to be recoded, you coat them. They should never fail. I'm just shocked that three hundred thousand, you know, three hundred thousand here, three hundred thousand there. It three hundred thousand would pave an awful lot of potholes in the city of Gloucester, and I, I just I, I can't agree with Counselor O'Neil more that this is a lot of money, and it's, it's I'm, I'm just shocked. Grease traps aren't a replaceable item. You clean them. If they need to be coated, you coat them. I'm familiar with grease traps. I worked on them. I own one. And I, I don't know what to say. I'm just shocked. Three hundred thousand, as Counselor Worthley says, prevailing wage that will add up to a cost of a job, but I, I, I wish we had a, a more detailed engineering data, pictures showing failures. They typically never need to be repaired, or replaced, shall I say.
Anyone else like to speak on this that has not yet spoken? Council O'Neil, and then we'll, we'll move the vote.
Yes, thank you. This would be a question, I believe, for Mr. Dunn. You said the, the project went out to bid, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so there should be an itemized
RFQ, RFP?
Yeah, there should be an itemized bid, right, stating what they're gonna do, and how, how many grease traps, and if they have to jackhammer the floor and whatnot.
Yes, there is a, there is a response to the bid, yes.
Can, can you send that to the city council and/or just me? I, I'm really curious as to how many grease traps and, and and what this entails, because it's a lot of money, so. If you can do that, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, and we'll do a roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
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 Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
No.
Council O'Neil.
No.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Seven in favor, two opposed, Council O'Neil, Council O'Hara, and Council O'Neil, our CFO, will send you that material. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the ordinance and administration standing committee for or June fifth?
Council Nolan.
We have no items under this heading tonight. Thank you.
Great. My next order of business, Madam Clerk.
So the June sixth Planning and Development Standing Committee meeting was canceled. So the next outing would be the first scheduled public hearing, public hearing twenty-two-three dash zero-two-nine, special city council permit twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-six. The application of Gloucester YC and City Free Lobbying for building height in excess of thirty-five feet in accordance with Gloucester zoning ordinance section three point one twenty-six, current CCP, building heights in excess of thirty-five feet, at Dale Avenue number two, map fourteen, lot sixty-nine, in the CT district.
Before I open the public hearing, I have an announcement I would like to make. I would like to announce that public hearing two thousand and twenty-three oh three oh, amend GCO, chapter twenty-two, traffic and motor vehicles, resident sticker parking by adding Apple Street both sides, by adding Um, by adding Juniper Road both sides, uh, for a pence cycle across Apple Street to its end where it intersects Corliss. Um, and adding Hoover Range, which entirely, and all of those would be starting May first through September fifteenth. Um, and then the second public hearing, um, that I'd like to announce is a public hearing two thousand and twenty-three oh three one. Amend G C O, chapter twenty-one, streets, parks and other public places. Article one in general, section twenty-one dash one, prerequisite to acceptance of ways by striking comment. Section twenty-one one and adding new section twenty-one dash one prerequisite to acceptance of of ways. Um, counselors, I am just asking that we are going to be moving that of those two public hearings that I just announced, number two and number three on the agenda to after the council vote, because our council vote last year, um, took us two hours and eighteen minutes. And, um, and we have, I believe it's fifty-four votes that we have to get through and it's imperative that we get those done. Um, so for those of you who came to listen to those two matters, understand that we're doing this because the most important thing that we're doing tonight, now that these are important, is to, um, is to make sure that we can approve the fiscal twenty-four budget. So I'd like at this point to open up the public hearing and ask that the applicants from the library, um, if you would, um, do your presentation and, um, we'll begin the public hearing. So the public hearing is open. Welcome Jenny Benedict. Thank you. You introduce yourself to us all, even though you're familiar face.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counsel Gilman. Uh, so joining me this evening is Simon Paddock and, uh, from the library board and also Ron Lamar, uh, who is our project manager from Doran Whittier, and I believe Neil Joyce, who is our O P M, is also, um, online, so if you could find him in the waiting room and and let him in as well. And I will. Oh, and if I could please share my screen.
Gross, that Jenny?
Neil Joyce is in.
So Ron and Simon are both in. And Neil Joyce, great. Hey, you have the floor. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. So I will turn it over to Simon, uh, Paddock to make some few introductory remarks.
Thank you, Jenny, and, uh, thank you to the city council. Uh, my name is Simon Paddock. I live at sixty-five Mount London Avenue in Gloucester. And I am a member of the Board of the Gloucester Lyceum and Sawyer Free Library. Thank you for giving us this time to present our request for a special permit for the Sawyer Library twenty twenty-five project. In February of twenty twenty-two, the city council approved the project as a construction manager risk project, and since then we have worked with our architects, O P M and construction manager to refine the design. Tonight, we are before you to request that the city council approve a special permit for a building height in excess of thirty-five feet. Um, and I hope you'll consider it favorably. I would like to introduce or hand it back over to Jenny to talk more about the project and our request. Thanks.
Thank you, Simon.
Thank you, Simon. Uh, so I wanted to say a few words about the process, uh, prior to tonight. As, uh, you are aware, it's largely due to a nine million dollar grant award from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, the Public Library Construction Grant Program, that we have the opportunity to do the project and secure the future of our, uh, public institution for generations to come. So we recently learned that M B L C has approved an additional pandemic escalation payment of just shy of a million dollars, which is very good news. So the M B L C grant, uh, program has a number of milestones and requirements, and it also recognizes factors that are subject to local decision-making. So the building must be planned for a minimum operational life of twenty years, which influences the building's size and the design and construction of the library building program, so the interior of the building is subject to M B L C oversight. Uh, the M B L C is involved throughout the project and has the authority to review and approve plans and specifications, even the bid documents and the contract awards. So at this time, M B L C has reviewed the construction drawings and determined that they do meet the library building program requirements, and they have accepted this design for the grant award. In terms of the city's permitting processes and local decision-making authority, to date, we have secured a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Commission in early January and a site plan approval from the planning board in early February. Then in late March, the zoning board of appeals gave their approvals for special permits related to altering and expanding a non-conforming structure for exceeding the maximum allowable building height and to allow a lesser number of off-street parking spaces. They also approved a variance for parking lot screening requirements. On May the seventeenth, we appeared before the Planning and Development Committee, who made the recommendation for the public hearing of this evening. In terms of our overall timeline, our schedule is to go out to bid and finalize contracts over the summer with site work starting in September. We anticipate that the construction phase will be approximately eighteen to twenty months, and that would be, that would put us on track to open the doors and welcome you all inside our fabulous twenty twenty-five Sawyer Free Library in the late spring of twenty twenty-five. So now I will turn it over to Ron Ron Lamar and he will, uh, give you a project overview of the site plan and exterior render rate renderings, followed by elevations that show, uh, the building heights.
Thank you. Welcome, Ron.
Thank you very much. Um, hi, everyone. I'm Ron Lamar from Doran Whittier Architects. Um, thanks for letting me speak tonight. So what Jenny is showing here, um, in this slide is the existing library. The existing library has the term C C D zoning on that, um, the tan L-shaped building. And then the two or, excuse me, three other pieces of property behind that, which the library owns. Um, that's where the new parking and the new addition will go. Uh, this is a site plan oriented in the same way, and what you can see here is the Saunders House at the lower right-hand corner of the slide. The existing library, the Manell Library in white, and then our new addition is on the left-hand side in gray. And there you can see the, um, renovated parking spaces on the left. And as you can see, there's an extensive amount of landscaping, um, being performed at the library. It is going to be a very green building. Um, the sustainability goals are, um, for a lead gold project. And so everything, the holistic design starts with the site and goes all through the building. So this is an elevation of the proposed twenty twenty-five, um, renovation, and you can see that essentially there's a new front porch. You can see that the entrance slides over to the right from the existing. There's a straight run stair that goes right to the front door, um, and off to the left, there's a handicap um sloped walkway, so it's even shallower than a handicap ramp, and that allows everybody accessibility into uh, the library, all landing at the top of that stair. This is another view looking, um, down from Dale Avenue towards the fire station in the background. You can see the porch, uh, that's going to get, uh, rebuilt, if you will, uh, the stair that leads up. And this one, you can see the light monitor or the cupola, um, up at the top of the library. Um, that is getting rebuilt and it's going to actually be four inches shorter than what's there now. Um, but that's getting rebuilt to bring in more natural light into the central core of the library for good reasons in terms of library programming, but also the sustainability aspect. And what you see in the back of the library towards the fire station is the new addition, um, with the bay window. And this is standing down in that new parking lot in front of the fire station, looking back at the new addition. Uh, the new addition here, as you see, is a two-story, excuse me, a three-level, um, addition. The lower level is the community meeting room, which you can see here in gray with the corner window. And then there's an entrance from the parking lot, uh, to welcome people into the library. And then we have a two-story element, um, sitting on top of that, which has the bay windows on the left. Um, the windows that you see here, which are vertically oriented, take on the same design aesthetic as the Manell Building. Instead of tapered brick in a horizontal fashion, we have tapered brick in a vertical fashion. This is the view from the temple. Um, and what you're looking at here is again the Manell Building. Uh, the view that the temple currently looks at remains the same. Then there is a gasket, if you will, of glass, and that glass gasket offsets the existing historic Manell Building with the new addition. So the building height is currently in excess of thirty-five feet, and we would like to continue, um, the excess of thirty-five feet. Um, what you see here in red are the additions going on to, uh, the Manell Building. It's the front porch designated in red. On the right-hand side is the addition towards the back of the building. And then the piece in question tonight is the light monitor um, at the top of the building, which, as I noted, is actually four inches shorter, uh, than the existing one was. And then this is looking at it from the north. Again, um, all of the red is outlined, the new addition on the right, the monitor at the top of the building and the porch on the left-hand side. The rendering down below, this also gives you another good view of the Manell Building with the new light monitor on top. And this separation of the historic building from the new addition is also highlighted by that glass gasket that separates the old from the new. That's something that is, um. It's a very sympathetic thing to do from a historic point of view, and the Historic Commission was in, but very much in favor of that. And then lastly, this is looking at it from the fire station, um, where you see that essentially the new addition is all new, uh, construction. And down below, you can see the photograph of the existing facade that faces the fire station now, and then what that will look like, um, when we're done. And this is from the, um, the side of the temple, again, with the Manell Building, the gasket on the left with the new addition and the cupola or the light monitor, if you will, up at the top, and then the porch off to the right. And you can see in the photograph, um, below of what the existing condition is, and then what the new rendering will look like.
So I think that concludes the, uh, presentation, um, and we've been delighted to entertain questions.
Okay, so we will get there. So thank you so much. So now we're back to the public hearing and we'd like to see if anyone would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this proposal, the special council permit. Um, let me see. I see no hands raised. Um, so we'll go to the next step of, of. Um, we have Paige Russell. Paige, would you, um, introduce yourself and, um, you have three minutes to talk to us in either favor or opposition about the special council permit? Well, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, briefly, it, I live around the corner, so this is a definite of effect for people. I'm on Middle Street, sixty-five Middle Street at the corner of Center and Middle. So I'm literally a stone's throw from this Sawyer Library and the proposal. While we are also getting the senior center right across the street and, um, my home has also been rocked as the previous caller, when talking about downtown, was discussing. Um, there's a lot of construction going on concurrently. So I am in support of the library and the design is quite beautiful and I I think it's a it's going to be a game changer from downtown and I think it is absolutely necessary. I just, um, want to just throw in a a citizen's request to really consider the, um, obstacles and the parameters and the logistics of such a project. Um, and I'm curious how it, uh, dovetails or overlaps with the senior center that's under construction right now. Um, construction began this morning, both downtown on Main Street, uh, the project at the senior center, and all of the noise began before seven A M. today. I'm not kidding. I live here and you know, I I know some people get up at the, at that hour anyway, but, um, I work till eight, nine o'clock at night, whatever. That is still quiet time for for downtowners a little bit anyway, and it was deafening. So, um, in discussing it, downtown construction and the of cause and effect for Main Street retailers, et cetera, as the woman from Dogtown Books, I had no idea her, uh, issues were as grave with the pump and the flooding and all that she described. But as a resident, I am very curious. Uh, I own my condo here and I'm just curious if there is an overlap and when construction would begin. I apologize for not knowing this in advance. Thank you, though, and I'm in support of the design's beautiful. I think we absolutely need the library to be enhanced, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paige. Would anyone else like to speak in favor or in opposition to the special council permit? Seeing none. Um, we have, um. Madam Court, do we have any correspondences or communications?
No communications.
And there are none. Um, counselors, are there any questions that we'd like to ask the applicant? Um, Counsel Worthy and then Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you, everybody involved in the library for his presentation. Thank you, Ron, for your, uh, specific presentation. I've always had a a question, said nothing to the library, but why we ever have to have, unless there's a, there's no change of use, if you're keeping a building the same height or going lower, why the city council should even be adding the burden of, uh, of getting a permit. But I just want to hear for the record how much higher or lower or the same that the building is going to be after construction.
Um, I think that it's four inches lower, but, um, I will let Ron speak to that if you would, um, if you would just repeat.
Sure, sure. So the the existing, the existing top is, um, forty-nine feet, five inches above the average grade plane, which is how the ordinance measures it. And the new will be, um, forty-nine feet, one inch. So in effect, it will be four inches shorter than the existing.
Okay, I heard that. Just want to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, I believe Counsel O'Hara had his hand raised for a question. Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. Um. It's not directly related to to the foreign shorter issue, but possibly with the construction team present. If the constituent who lives at the corner of Center and Middle, if they could validate that construction time does not begin before, or at least any kind of noise-making construction time doesn't happen before seven A M. Can anyone validate that?
Um, I would ask our C A O to answer that, if you would. Um, Joe, you know the ordinance. Um, would you mind speaking to that?
I'm sorry, Val, I can't speak to that because we, the construct, that would be the construction team and they're not on here. Um, but I can look into the ordinance or the counselor, if that's what he's asking. I believe he was asking what their plan is. Um, I'm more than happy to send it over to the council.
Okay, um, Counsel Nolan has his hand raised as Chair of O N A. Do you want to speak to that, Counsel Nolan?
Uh, the city ordinance is that construction cannot start any earlier than six. So six A M. is when they can start. Most construction companies start at seven. The city ordinance is the start time of six.
Thank you. Um, any, any other questions, Counsel? Um, seeing none. Um, I will close the public hearing and I'll ask Counsel Grow to undo the committee report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, the Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor, one opposed. Counsel O'Neil recommend that the city council grant Gloucester Lyceum and Sawyer Free Library a special permit, special council permit two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero six for the proper property located at Dale Avenue number two, assessors map fourteen, lot sixty-nine, in the C C D district pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinances, section one point ten point one and three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty-five feet for the new Sawyer Free Library to have an overall building height of forty-nine feet. For the new Sawyer Free Library to have an overall building height of forty-nine feet, one inch for a total height increase of fourteen. Feet, one inch over thirty-five feet. This permit is made on the basis of plans and elevation stated January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And submitted to the city clerk on May ninth, two thousand twenty-three entitled. Existing conditions plan Gloucester Lyceum and Sawyer Free Library. And utility compilation plan Gloucester Lyceum and Sawyer Free Library and nineteen plans and elevations. Submitted with the ZBA application of February second, two thousand twenty-three. Subject to new information and or debate that results in the public hearing, the special permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and I so move.
Motion made by Counsel Grow, I think it was Counsel Majota did the second. Okay, so the committee report, Counsel Grow.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we we just heard the same presentation that we heard from at P and D. You know, the, the, the. Punchline on this, of course, is that we're approving a height incre- uh height decrease, actually, for this particular case. The building is already five inches, four inches taller than it is proposed to be. To Counsel Worthley's point, I mean, it seems. Kind of redundant that we'd have to do this, but it is new construction and therefore we have to put in a new, a new permit. They would. Regardless of that, they'd have to amend a special bounds of bounds permit anyway. So it's, it's, it's kind of, that's, that's the process that we have. But I fully support this. I think without doing so, would would require that the. The library go back and redesign an entire project for the sake of four inches, which makes zero sense to me.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak on this in our discussion, Councillors? Counsel O'Neill.
Yes, hi, thank you. I am just thinking of the residents in the area. And everything seems to be going higher and higher and higher. It's not just a matter of. Being the same height as the original building. It's a whole mass that's that big. So. It will be taking up parking spaces and it will be taking up, it'll be shadowing. Residents, so. I'm not in favor of the height. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Councillors, on the motion? So I would like to speak to this. As we look at the. Section three point one point six B, which is in excess of thirty-five. The zoning says the the permit shall contain such conditions as the council deems necessary. And shall only issue upon a written determination by the council that such increase. And allowable height is consistent with the neighborhood character. I'd like to speak to that for a moment. This is consistent with the neighborhood character because it's exactly what they've had minus four inches forever. And I think it's tasteful. I think the architect has done a marvelous job making this look as. Consistent to how that property has looked over the years. And it's come a long way since the initial meetings where about five or six years ago, we all met at Sawyer Free Library. And discussed what was going to happen to this building. So I I just think that it's very, very consistent with neighborhood character. And I, and I do not see that there is any obstruction of use because it's no higher than it has been. Nor is there going to be impairment of utilities or other adverse impacts. I think it's going to be lovely for this section of town. And I'm very comfortable with the granting the special counsel permit for height. So I will be supporting this. Any further comments, Councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Absolutely, yes.
Counsel Majota. Counsel Memmer.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Absolutely, yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
No.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one opposed. Counsel O'Neill. Thank you, Jenny and your team. We appreciate you being here and for all the hard work that you've been doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for considering the request and approving it this evening. Good night.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk. We're skipping the public hearings two and three. We're going to go to those after. The fiscal two thousand and twenty-four voting. Um, so. I guess you should, that's the whole, that's the whole matter. So for the benefit of the public, if you would announce that.
Okay, great. For counsel, though, adoption FY twenty-four budget, appropriate general fund free cash for subsequent year expenditures. Appropriates sewer enterprise fund retained earnings for subsequent years expenditures. General fund appropriations by department, general fund estimated revenues, community preservation fund estimated revenues and appropriations. Water enterprise estimated revenues and appropriations, water rate. Sewer enterprise estimated revenues and appropriations, sewer rate. Waterways enterprise estimated revenues and appropriations, tablet rink enterprise estimated revenues and appropriations. Revolving funds chap, Mass General Law chapter forty-four, section fifty-three, eight and a half. School food program revolving from Mass General Law chapter forty-four, section fifty-three.
Thank you. And at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our esteemed B and F Chair. Counsel Memmer. And I know you have some introductory remarks and then we are going to go through. Many votes.
Just, just a few.
So.
Many dollars.
Right.
A few votes.
And 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 just a shout out also to Tony Gross, our Vice Chair of B and F and Jeff Worthley. The third member, job well done for all of your detail and all the work on these important, this most important matters. So.
Absolutely, and as well as all the other Councillors that took time out of their busy day daily schedules to. Participate in our committee of the law, committee of the whole. Budget finance review of the budget meetings which took place over the course of several days, as I'll describe in a moment. But as Budget and Finance Chair, I'm pleased to present the recommendations to the Budget and Finance Committee. For the city's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which does begin July first, twenty twenty-three. And first, spending in the general fund amounts to one hundred and thirty-three million. Eight hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Of which forty-nine million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars is set aside for our schools. Second, spending in the enterprise funds amounts to nineteen million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. That includes the water, the sewer, Dorothy Talbot Rink and Waterways Enterprise Funds. And third, spending in the Community Preservation Act funds amounts to eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Fourth, spending limit authorizations for city and school revolving funds amounts to three million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand. Three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Overall, spending in the general fund, enterprise funds. Bless you.
Sorry.
Amounts to one hundred and fifty-four million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And spending limit authorizations for city and school revolving funds amount to three million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. For a grand total in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven million, four hundred and one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Putting this in perspective, we are a city of some thirty thousand people. Our city covers over forty-two square miles with sixty miles of coastline. And between all city services and all city departments, we rely on over one thousand, one hundred skilled municipal employees. To keep our city running smoothly. And we do here extend our appreciation for the professional work of Mayor Greg Verga's team, in particular. Jill Cahill, CFO and Treasurer John Dunn, Assistant Treasurer CFO Treasurer Connor McCorkle. And our school committee and our school management team. This council appreciates our own staff's hard work in this progress, which included our city auditor Kenny Costa, City Clerk Julian Senos. Assistant City Clerk Grace Quire and Sherry White are clerk of committees. Now, before I just go into the nuts and bolts a little bit more, I just wanted to review the schedule that we conducted here. I think it's worth reflecting on the timeframe that this is all taking place under. The administration presented. Their proposed budget to the city council on Tuesday, May second. And on Wednesday, May third, we had our first special. Budget and finance and council of the whole. Review session, which lasted from nine in the morning, nine in the morning, three in the afternoon and covered. About fifty percent of the city's departments. We met with each department head and reviewed by line item, as we're going to do tonight again. Each, each of their budgets. The following Wednesday on May, May tenth, we had our second full day budget review session. And then on Tuesday, May thirtieth, we we met to review the school, met with the school committee here in the space here. To review their proposed budget for, for the city. We had a spe- special budget council, special council city meeting here. To review the public hearing on the budget and then we're here tonight on the votes. And again, all of our meetings are on Zoom and available to review all the, all those discussions. And I would like to just repeat again that all city department heads carefully explained and defended their appropriation requests. And they did this not once but twice. First to the mayor's team and then again to the budget and finance committee, line by line, dollar by dollar. And it's a careful, deliberate process. And making efforts at every step to be open, to be public, to be accessible, respecting the needs of the city. And the hard-earned financial support provided by our city's taxpayers. Our, our fiscal stewardship means that our independent auditor and Massachusetts Department of Revenue's positive reviews and acceptance. Will result from this process. The Budget and Finance Committee appreciates that this has been a tough budget year for the mayor's office to bring into balance. Due in part to the continuing uncertainty of our economy, which includes inflation concerns and now rising interest rates. As well as significant debt service that remains. As reviewed by CIO Jill Cahill and CFO John Dunn, the department heads and the mayor's team. This budget, which will be voting again tonight, within its constraints of our contractual obligations. Already presents its own challenges moving forward. So I'm going to make a few procedural observations and we'll get right into it. All of the motions to be put forward were voted by members of the Budget and Finance Committee, Counsel Gross, Counsel Worthy and myself. And for each department, the amount of personal services, that's staff, ordinary maintenance. That's routine office support and capital outlay. Debt service and any special transfers will each be specified in a single motion as read by myself. With the exception of one department, which is the school department. And each line item will be considered to have been separately voted. Otherwise, the school committee department budget is a single motion. That represents the bottom line budget. And I will vote, I will motion to vote. Vice Chair of Budget and Finance, Counselor Tony Gross, will second the record unless he has recused himself for a particular vote. And upon the city, the council's roll call vote. We will announce the results of each vote and all motions will require a roll call. Due to the fact that we are still in a remote hybrid meeting setting. But we're to give out, do you want to start with the? Or you want to, Kenny, go through those?
So I think we're, we're ready to begin.
Okay.
So if you want to make the committee report.
Yep.
Counsel Memmer. And then, like you said, Counsel Gross will second it. And we will call for a discussion. And then we will do the roll call vote.
Very good.
Okay.
So to start with, we look at the overall picture. So the general fund free cash, enterprise fund retained earnings motions. Reserved for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget are as follows. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three general fund free cash appropriation related to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Budget and finance, on a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Worthy, recommended. You know, vote of three in favor, zero opposed. The city council appropriate the amount of four hundred and eight thousand, eighty-three dollars. From the general fund, undesignated fund balance free cash account number is noted to the general fund, fund balance reserved for special purposes. Account number as noted. The purpose of this appropriation from general fund, undesignated fund balance free cash. Is to reduce the fiscal year twenty twenty-four tax levy and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memmer and second by Counsel Gross. Is there discussion, Councillors? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memmer, yes. Oh, I'm going to just read the last names. I'm sorry, I needed a commitment to do that. Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Before we do the next vote, what I'd like to do is just recognize. Our Fire Chief, Chief Smith was on the call. Our Assistant Chief of the Fire Department, Mark Rebus. We have Suzanne Egan, who is our General Counsel, and we have our school committee chair Kathy Clancy on the phone. I just wanted to recognize you. And I also saw Bob Ryan, who is our Traffic Commissioner. I think I've introduced everyone else already. So, so next vote.
Moving forward.
Thank you.
Moving forward, this is for your twenty twenty-three sewer enterprise fund retained earnings appropriation is related to the twenty twenty-four budget. Budget and finance, on a motion by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy. Voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council appropriate the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. From the sewer enterprise fund, undesigned fund balance retained earnings of free cash. Account number as noted to the sewer enterprise fund, fund balance reserved for special purposes, account number as noted. And the purpose of this appropriation from the sewer enterprise fund retained earnings free cash. Is to stabilize the sewer enterprise fund user fees for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memmer and second by Counsel Gross. Is there discussion, Councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memmer.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business.
And now we get into the nitty-gritty details of our departments. With the general fund budget appropriations by department and we, we begin appropriately with Department one, 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 which is our city council. And a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Worthy, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the city. Council approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for the city council. As follows, personal services, one hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Ordinary maintenance, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars for a departmental total for city council of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And I so move.
Counsel Gross.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Members, second by Counsel Gross. Is there discussion, Councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memmer.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.
Yes, seven, nine, favorite, zero, opposed. Next order of business.
Moving right along, Department one, two, one, the executive, city mayor's office, executive city mayor. Budget and finance on a recommendation by Counsel Memmer, seconded by Counsel Gross, voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for the executive slash city mayor as follows. Personal services, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and eight, forty-five dollars. Ordinary maintenance, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for a departmental total for the city mayor. Of five hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Members, second by Counsel Gross. Is there discussion, Councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memmer.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, this habit nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, councillor Memar.
Department one three five, our, our city auditor. The committee recommendation on a motion by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Worthley, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for the city auditor is follows. Personal services, three hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Ordinary maintenance, fifty-four thousand two hundred and two dollars for a departmental total, city auditor of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion, councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote, councillor Gilman, yes, councillor Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, this habit nine in favor, zero opposed. It's hard for me not to say councillor before I'll.
This is so full of respect.
But we've agreed, this was councillor O'Hara's idea, so I've got it, I've got it. I'll get it right pretty soon. It's just a cre- I'm a creature of habit. Um next order of business.
Next order of business is department, our budget for department one three eight, our purchasing department of the city. And the committee recommendation on a motion by myself, councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for purchasing as follows. Personal services, one hundred and fifty-four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Ordinary maintenance, two hundred and fifty-six thousand twenty-five dollars for a departmental total for purchasing of four hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, any discussion, councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memar.
Yep.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, this habit nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department one four one assessors. Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for the assessors as follows. Personal services, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Ordinary maintenance, seventy-six thousand fifty-one dollars for a departmental total for assessors of five hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion, councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote, councillor Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next vote.
Department one four five treasurer collector. On a motion by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Worthley, the budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for the treasurer slash collector as follows. Personal services, seven hundred and two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Ordinary maintenance, two hundred and nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Debt service, thirty thousand dollars, departmental total, nine hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department one five one law. Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for law as follows. Personal services, three hundred and thirty-five thousand ninety-eight dollars. Ordinary maintenance, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a departmental total for law of four hundred and fifty-five thousand ninety-eight dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota. Memar. Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business.
Department one five two personnel, human resources. Budget and finance recommends that the uh city council, excuse me, on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for personnel slash human resources as follows. Personal services, three hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. Ordinary maintenance, sixty-three thousand and four dollars for a departmental total for personnel, human services of three hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department one five five is next, management information services or management information systems. Services and systems, yes. Committee recommendation on a motion by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for management slash information systems as follows. Personal services, four hundred and eleven thousand forty dollars. Ordinary maintenance, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars. And capital outlay, forty-two thousand five hundred dollars for a departmental total for management information systems of one million two hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next department is one six one, our wonderful city clerk's office. And the committee recommendation was that on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for the city clerk as follows. Personal services, three hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Ordinary maintenance, six thousand nine hundred and five dollars for a departmental total for city clerk of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department one six three registration. Uh our committee recommendation on a motion by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for registration as follows. Personal services, seventy-four thousand eight hundred. Ordinary maintenance, one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred. For a departmental total, registration for two hundred and five thousand three hundred dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department one seven one conservation commission. Committee recommendation as follows, on a motion by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for conservation commission as follows. Personal services, one hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Ordinary maintenance, twenty thousand dollars. For total for the conservation commission department of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred, uh seven hundred and ninety dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
See.
Memar.
See.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes nine, zero opposed.
Department one eight one, community development. Committee recommendation on a motion by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Worthley, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council approve, approve this fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for community development as follows. Personal services, seven hundred thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Ordinary maintenance, one hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for a departmental total for community development of eight hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and nine dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Members, seconded by councillor Gross, is there a discussion? I'm councillor O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. I am looking at the binder. On page twenty-six and twenty-seven is the community development department. And uh the salaries are six hundred and eighty-seven thousand two sixty-eight. But down below, they have a hundred thousand dollars for planning projects, consultants, grant matching funds and zoning support. Um for fifty thousand. Service for economic development projects, grant matching funds, et cetera, twenty-five thousand and their sustainability projects, grant matching funds, twelve five. And then public relations for twelve five. Um. Uh is that one hundred thousand dollars all for consultants?
Um our C A O, thank you for raising your hand.
More than having to answer uh that question. Um as you can see, councillor, it says some, some of it is consultant, some of it is grant matching funds. Um it depends on the project. This gives us the ability if a grant becomes available um for one of the community development projects, we can pull grant matching funds out of here. And then in other cases where we need consultant support for um any one of our number of projects, one example being economic development downtown, the possibility of a downtown management organization, um it does give us the ability to bring in a consultant. So it's not all for consultants, it's also used for grant matching.
Thank you. Um councillor Grow.
Uh Madam Chair, um just, just for the future, the rest of the, the, the procedures tonight. We've had an opportunity to ask questions. Are we going to entertain questions on every motion? Or is this going to be an issue of discussion and potential amendments? I don't think that we're really, at this point in the, in the game, should be entertaining questions at all.
Um I, I think if, I think if it's a, if it's a very brief uh question on
Verification.
On verification of interpreting the numbers, I'm okay with that. Um I think for all the other specifics, I think we've had four very thorough meetings where they've all been vetted and the minutes in the Zoom meetings are very clear. So um I'm comfortable with councillor O'Neill's question. Um. And um councillor O'Neill, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have the unfortunate duty of working ten, twelve, fourteen hours a day. So I could not attend many of these budget and finance meetings from nine to three or whatever they are, whatever they were, and I apologize for that, but I do have to pay the bills and many of our citizens do as well. So I'm asking questions. And we have, when we only have eighteen people online, but a lot of people, you know, n- need answers to these questions. I still don't understand that hundred thousand dollars. I understand that fifty thousand is for consultant and grant matching funds so that if we get a grant, we can, we can match it with part of that hundred thousand dollars. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
So I just out of a six hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollar um employee payment or whatever, um employee payroll, we add a hundred thousand dollars to that for consultants. I, I just doesn't, I, I I am very much opposed to that one hundred thousand dollars. And I believe I have the right to oppose that and speak my mind and ask questions because I do work. And the last thing I have to do when I drag my butt home at the end of a long hard day is sit through a six hour B and F meeting. I'd be up till two or three o'clock in the morning, so.
Councillor, thank you. Um.
Madam, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I'd like to respond, please.
Okay, um councillor Grow.
There, there are any number of us on this council that work for a living and have to pay bills. Part of our responsibility is to show up to meetings prepared and to take the opportunity when presented to ask questions for clarification prior to these meetings so that we're not bogging ourselves down in minute details that could have been explained much earlier during the process. There was emails sent out to every one of the councillors asking us to articulate any questions we had about budget items and getting it done. I understand you have a right to oppose an issue and, and certainly make an amendment and we'll, we'll vote it. But I, I don't think that we should be having to, to basically re-entertain all the questions that should have been asked up to this point. Because I too make a living by working.
Um I would like to just add something. Um so we have um a section of our charter, councillor O'Neill um that states that if a member of our council has a problem um meeting at um during the daytime um that they can state that objection. And um we did not have anyone on this council that stated that daytime meetings wasn't, was a problem. Um but if whomever might be on this council in the years ahead, if you ever see that that is an issue, um you should state your reason and we can, um we can meet at a different time. Um but um it's um, that's in the city charter and um I, I believe at this point we have thoroughly vetted these. Um we've had um we've had meetings, we've had Zoom meetings. If you couldn't make the meetings, you could watch the Zoom meetings. We've had minutes that have gone out. That's the importance of why our minutes get approved in a timely manner, right? As soon as we can, the me- the meeting minutes are very, very concise. We've had our books. Um this is almost the forty-fifth day that we've had our books. Um and um I'm comfortable moving forward in it and as it was just said, if you have an issue where you'd like to amend one of our motions because you have a problem with it, we will certainly entertain that as soon as the motion is made before the discussion. Um so um without objection, I'd like to.
Point of order.
Um uh councillor O'Hara, what is the point?
Uh my, my point is that we, we are discussing the budget. We are approving the budget. You have a, a notation discussions. I don't think it's unreasonable to be asking questions. With the, the, the budget and finance subcommittee, which did a tremendous job and as, as you know, I sat in during the daytime on where I could and ask questions when I could. But this, you know, reviewing a budget and finance Zoom meeting, you cannot stop and ask councillor Memhard, Gross or Worthley a question. So the alternate is no. So I, I understand this will extend the, the length of the meeting, but we are here to represent the people and their hard earned money. And to ask a question, I don't think is unreasonable, nor should a councillor be, be beaten upon for asking a question.
So councillor O'Hara, you will re- recall that I supported councillor. So councillor O'Hara, you will re- recall that I supported councillor O'Neil's question. So we were not, I was not refuting as the council president her question. So um, she asked her question and I think we're ready to move on to, um, to further discussion. We have a motion on this, we have second. Um, anyone else of further discussion that we would like to, um, on this motion? Councillor Worthley?
Thank you. So uh, I do want to move forward as well. Um, I share councillor O'Neil's concern. I also work and day meetings cost me money. Um. A- as you noted, there is an opportunity if any council objects to having night meetings that we can do them. I'm sorry, day meetings we could do at night. The challenge, of course, is I've been part of budgets before where you have lots of night meetings. You have staff that are working all day and then they work all night. Oftentimes, there's few or no one in, in person at those meetings or via Zoom. And to councillor O'Neil's point, if you work a twelve, fourteen hour day, then you have a city council meeting at night that also makes it challenging to participate. So it's sort of six or one half dozen the other. If you have a night meeting, then that just means more and more time. But it also might mean uh, comp time or overtime for city staff that have to then come to night meetings that could go into the wee hours of the night. And so it's a challenge. It's, it's not. Um, I, I hear you. Uh, I'm not dismissing it. Uh, I can assure you that we went every, we went through every single line, every item. And the managers answered tough questions. And I'm not saying that, that there isn't room for more questions. But we did take the time to go through every single department. And um, you know, if next year, i- if any councillor, if I'm here, and if someone says we can't, shouldn't have a meeting during the day. We can certainly do that, um, and I'll have night meetings as well. So, um. I don't want to dismiss the question. I think that councillor Gilman, you may handle that well. And if um, we want to discuss the hundred thousand dollars in consultant fees or whatever. Uh, consultant line item, I'd be happy to discuss that as a member of Budget and Finance.
Um, councillor O'Neil.
Yeah, I have two questions. One, um. Uh, as a statement, sorry. I did not realize, thank you for telling me. Um, I, a councillor told me previous to this, that um. I could object to the time of day that the meetings were held. I didn't know that until the meetings were over. So I, if I am elected again, I will be very much aware of that so that I can attend them and ask questions in the future. Um, and second is I, I not sure, is this the time that I would um, like to make an amendment to this?
Yes.
Recommendation?
Yep, if you'd like to do that, um, make your amendment.
Okay, um, I would like to amend. Hold on.
It's Department one eighty one Community Development.
Okay, Department one eighty one Community Development. I would like to amend it to ordinary maintenance to be seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty. And which would bring the total to seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. And I so move.
Second.
Been made by councillor O'Neil to amend Department one eighty one Community Development to a hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty in ordinary maintenance.
No, to, to, no, to seventeen thousand, four hundred
Thousand, four hundred and fifty? I thought I said that, I'm sorry. In total for seven hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and nine. And it was seconded by councillor O'Hara. Um, is there a discussion on the amendment to the main motion councillors? Um, I'll give councillor O'Neil the floor first because you made the, the, um, the amendment.
Thank you. Again, I just think it's a lot of money. Um, on top of over half a million dollars. And um, it's going to consultants. Um, and matching and, and it's a I don't, is it a slush fund for grants? So that if we get a grant, we can match it. It, it doesn't it doesn't make sense to me. It just doesn't make sense. To have a hundred thousand dollars to give away to consultants when we have community development personnel services that that can do the job.
Okay, anyone else like to discuss the amendment? Councillor Worthley and then councillor Grow.
Thank you. Um, councillor O'Neil, I don't want to direct, address you directly, but with your question, um, I share your concern. But I'd like to just say that when there are matching grants, um. And the city, the mayor's office can't decide this is something we want to pursue. That would have to come through the council to decide to match that. Uh, for any dollar, I think, sorry, it might be over five thousand, um. Oh, I'm sorry, to apply for the grant. So before they even apply for the grant, they need to ask the council permission to do that if there's any matching funds. So that would give you, or any councillor, sort of that chance to say we don't support that grant, if you will. And as far as consultant fees, um, you know, there's not just giving to consultants, right? We're hiring them for a specific cause. Uh, that's not something that our staff can do. And for example, I don't know if this is, is part of this, but we have the master plan, which is required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So we have a, a master plan. And that means doing multiple, I mean, when we did last time, it was fifty-three meetings. That were off hours, weekends, nights. And pulling in information that we couldn't possibly ask our city staff to do. So we have a, a paid consultant to do that. Then it really gives us direction for our overall vision for the community. So, um. It's things like that, that I've been through personally, that I say, yeah, this is something that we wouldn't be able to handle on staff as well. As much as I appreciate that you commend the staff that we have, this is something I think we need.
Um, on, thank you councillor Worthley. Um, on the amendment, councillors, anyone else like to discuss the amendment? Um, councillor Grow. You are muted.
Um, I, I guess I would just ask the councillor how she expects the, the Community Development Director to deal with uh, issues that councillor Worthley's brought up about specific issues that arise where we, where we actually need specific expertise on a particular issue to be paid for. Um, by, by comparison, our Community Development Department is substantially understaffed compared to uh, neighboring communities. Uh, Salem has, has a significant number of community development employees that are there to, to manage these kinds of issues. Um, you know, we, we rightfully ought to be increasing the personal services substantially to cover additional staff. But when you have, when you have somebody who, who like, like our uh, planning director, and who works a regular thirty-five plus hours a week. Attending multiple meetings every, every week between the planning department, city council, conservation commission, all these things. We run our Community Development Department ragged. And to suggest that we could just add on all these additional uh, uh, subtopics for specialized um, uh, consultants is, is really kind of an impossible ask. And it's not, uh, it's not at all uh, something that I think that we, we, we should be doing. If we don't spend the money for consultants, it falls to the bottom line to the end of the year. But we shouldn't be delaying projects. Because we have to come in for supplemental appropriations during the year.
Um, any councillor, um, that has not spoken on the, um, amendment? Oh, councillor Memhard, of course.
Uh, is in, in terms of the work the Community Development Department does for the city, I think it's very important that they have access and know that, planning ahead, that they have access to this kind of resources to match other grants that become available. You know, you want, if you're accepting eight hundred thousand dollars, you need a hundred thousand dollars and you're to, to match it, that's worth it. To, to not have these funds in the budget available for this, for them to use under those circumstances is really, uh. You know, penny wise and pound foolish. It's, 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 you know, we've advocated for more grant writers because that just helps offset our co- our taxpayers burden dramatically to get outside resources in. Can't do it without matching grants. So it seems to me that this, this appro- this proposal as presented and has approved in this budget makes good sense. It may not be enough money. The sta- the department may be understaffed, but this is what's before us from the mayor, uh, for this department.
Um, so I have not spoken yet on this amendment and I will not be supporting the amendment. One of the things that we, um, discussed at the budget meeting that I held at Lanesville Community Center was, um, we did some best practices of other municipalities and Val Nelson led a best practice with the city of Salem. Because Salem is very, very aggressive and progressive with a lot of their issues that they have on community development. And um, if, if you saw the numbers of staff that they have versus what we have. Um, you know, we're keep being blessed with Gemma because we have one great person that we're able to sustainably, sustain- sustainability director in the past year. Um, and, and to, to watch what she does for this community is just amazing. And that's one person. Um, so I will not be supporting this, um, this amendment. Um, anyone else like to speak that has not spoken on the amendment? Um, councillor O'Neil, your hand is raised. You have the floor again. Go ahead.
Thank you. So if whether, if, I might as well get down to the nitty gritty, right? So of that one hundred thousand dollars. Fifty thousand is for service for planning projects, consultants, grant matching funds, and zoning support. So the thing with me is zoning, as everybody knows, right? Because I am the ward two councillor and that's where they want to put the multi-family units is downtown. So I am concerned that we're spending fifty thousand dollars on a consultant to increase multifamily housing downtown. And to your point, um. President Gilman. If you're comparing us to Salem, Salem has built up so dramatically that, um. Kim Driscoll said herself that she has built so much housing that she can't even, that it's been such a success that she can't even keep up with the demand now. So for her to keep she built so much that
Point of order.
Two in a crowd.
Councillor Nolan, you have the floor. Um, state your point.
I, I gotta call a point of order on this. We're, we're, we're going off track. We're talking about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, for the planning board, uh, the planning and development. And now we're getting into housing in Salem and housing on what I'm, I'm assessing is going to be the T O D. Um, I think that there's a, a lot more to why there's a hundred thousand dollars there. And I, I'm sorry councillor O'Neil, with this, I think it went way off, off topic on that.
I support your point of order councillor, I'm Nolan. Um. Any further, um, comments on the amendment before we vote the amendment? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote. Um. Just get my list. Um, councillor Gilman, no. Councillor Gross?
No.
Councillor Grow? Councillor Grow? On the amendment? We can't hear you. Councillor Grow?
He said yes.
No.
Um. Councillor, good try councillor, uh, councillor Rajota.
No.
Councillor Memhard?
No.
Nolan?
No.
O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Worthley?
No.
So you said no. Um, so motion fail, fails, uh, three in favor, six opposed, right?
No.
No.
Two in favor.
Two in favor.
Oh, oh yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Two in favor.
Two in favor, um, seven opposed, um, in favor were, um, O'Hara and O'Neil. Thank you. Um, so we're back to the main motion. Um, for the discussion on the main motion. Seeing none, roll call vote. Councillor Gilman, yes. Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Rajota?
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neil?
No.
Worthley?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one opposed. O'Neil?
Because we have no, we have to vote each one individually. Personal services and now ordinary maintenance.
Okay, um, so, so, um.
So the, the first line item, personal services?
Did, did everybody hear what our, um, auditor just said?
Yes.
Can you speak a little bit louder to that, Penny?
We could, we could hear him.
Because we have a descending vote, we now need to vote each category separately. So personal services would be the first category, then the second will be ordinary maintenance.
Okay.
Okay, so councillor Memhard?
So I, I would move to recommend that personal services for community development be at seven hundred thousand, nine hundred and fifty nine dollars.
Second.
Second.
Um, motion's made by councillor Memhard. I think it was councillor Grow that seconded. Um, is there a discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Rajota?
Yes.
Memhard?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Worthley?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
And then the remaining vote, I would move that for the Department of Community Development. We, uh, vote a ordinary maintenance budget for the year of one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Gross. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Rajota?
Yes.
Memhard?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neil?
No.
Worthley?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one in opposition. O'Neil? Next order of business?
The next order of business is moving ahead from communities development to police administration, Department two ten. Budget and Finance recommends on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Gross. To recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for police. Hyphen administration as follows. Personal services, six hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Ordinary maintenance, seventy four thousand, eight hundred and sixty five dollars. For a departmental total for police administration of seven hundred and fifty five thousand, four hundred and five dollars. And I so move.
Again.
Motion made by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Gross. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Rajota?
Yes.
Memhard?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Worthley?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department two eleven. Uniforms for police. Tracy, I'm sorry, that was a reminder of last year. You had a question about why we spend so much money on police uniforms.
Well, so if I may, in my defense, it says personal services, shouldn't that be personnel?
If I, if I may, so within the Master Law, chapter forty four thirty-two, it does specify for city you need to vote as personal services, which is essentially salaries, payroll, overtime. Ordinary maintenance, potentially non-payroll, which are, are vendors. Capital outlay, which are capital items such as vehicles or building improvements. So we're just following Master Law. We're just following, uh, D O R.
All right, thank you.
Requirements.
Thank you. No, it's a great question. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
So Department two eleven, police uniform, committee recommendation on a motion by myself, councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Gross. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriations for police hyphen uniform as follows. Personal services, six million, five hundred and thirteen thousand, one dollar. Ordinary maintenance, two hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Capital outlay, one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and one dollars. For a departmental total in Department two eleven police uniform of six million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. And I so move.
Again.
Motion's made by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Rajota?
Yes.
Memhard?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Worthley?
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department two twelve, police criminal investigations. Committee recommendation on a motion by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriation for police criminal investigations as follows. Personal services, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Ordinary maintenance, two hundred, two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Departmental total. Police criminal investigations. Departmental total, police criminal investigations of 552,340 dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, second by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine favors, zero opposed.
Next department, Department two sixteen, police harbors. Committee recommendation on a motion by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for police hyphen harbors as follows. Personal services, 333,730 dollars. Ordinary maintenance, 22,100 dollars. For departmental total, police harbors of 55,173 dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine favors, zero opposed.
Moving from harbors to parking. Department two eighteen, police parking. Committee recommendation on a motion by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Gross. Budget and finance committee voted in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations. For police hyphen parking as follows. Personal services, 135,977 dollars. Ordinary maintenance, zero. The total for the department of 135,977 dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, second by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine favors, zero opposed.
Next department is Fire Prevention and Suppression, Department number two twenty. Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for fire prevention and suppression. As follows. Personal services, 10,421,122 dollars. Ordinary maintenance, 870,236 dollars. Capital outlay, 137,037 dollars. For a total for the department of one, of eleven million, 428,395 dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, second by Council Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors?
Counsel.
O'Hara.
Yes, I brought this up at the uh, budget and finance meeting of the whole. Um, the fire chief mentioned a new position. Uh, within his department that would be, uh, he's hoping. Uh, he can hire somebody at the cost of 70,000 dollars. Uh, for OSHA regulations. Uh, it was mentioned that this was, that he was. Uh, if you will, christened with the responsibility.
Point order, that's a separate, that's still, that's a separate item.
I think the one that you want to um, discuss is Department two ninety one, which is a fire emergency management.
That's fine, thank you.
Coming up, so um, um, thank you, Kenny. Um, so um, any further discussion on this? Um, appreciate both Bob Reavis, our assistant fire chief, as well as our fire chief Eric Smith. That um, are still with us on the call, so it's appreciated that you're here to listen in. Um, so a roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
So the next department here for us tonight is Department two forty one, inspectional services. Our committee recommendation on a motion by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the city council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for inspectional services as follows. Personal services, 588,140, 147 dollars. Ordinary maintenance, 15,950 dollars for departmental total. Inspection services of 604,97 dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, second by Council Gross. Um, discussion. Um, Council Grow.
Uh, we're on, we're on fire emergency management, correct?
Inspection services.
I'm sorry, I apologize, my fault.
You're not paying attention, huh?
No, I thought we just voted that, that's why it was. It's getting late.
Not a problem. Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
And the next one, Department two, two nine one apparently is a, is a hot department. But it's fire emergency management, and the committee recommendation was as follows. On a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, the budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for fire, the emergency management as follows. Personal services. Personal services, seventy, seventy thousand dollars. Ordinary maintenance, fifty one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Capital outlay, two thousand, five hundred dollars. For a departmental total for fire emergency management of 123,750 dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, second by Council Gross. Um, is there a discussion, counselors? Council O'Hara.
So, so we at the, is, is.
Do you just want to make an amendment and then we can discuss your amendment?
Well, I'm, I'm questioning, as I questioned at the budget and finance, that position. And the value of that position.
Okay, so why don't you make a motion to amend, and then you can be the first person to discuss your amendment?
I'd like to amend the budget by reducing it 70,000 dollars.
So the personal, personal, yes, right? That's what you, okay.
That's correct.
And, and then your motion would be um, that the total be. Fifty three thousand, seven hundred and fifty? I'm, I'm not trying to. Put words in your mouth, but that's, I, I.
Yeah, if you want to deduct the 70,000 from the gross amount, that, that would be it.
Okay, so it's fifty three thousand some, no, you have to do that.
You just have to do the personal services.
Kenny said that I'm micromanaging this process, so uh, he's right, so.
Thank you, Kenny.
You did it perfect, so thank you. So um, Council O'Hara has a motion. To reduce personal to zero from 70,000. Is there a second on his amendment?
Second.
Council O'Neal. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second for amended amendment. Um, Counselor O'Hara, you have the floor because you made the amendment.
Certainly, uh, I, I asked the question at the budget and finance meeting of the whole as far as that position. And more importantly, the amount um, absorbing. Another city employee, I think in, in these times, and it was stipulated that that employee would be. Uh, responsible for OSHA regulations, O, OSHA laws. Uh, in today's environment, I'm a business owner, everything's available online. Uh, they're very inexpensively. Um, to gain information, I reached out to a couple of professionals. And they recommended the same rather than absorbing an employee. Um, I, I, I think multiple reasons, employees are very difficult to find. Uh, the value that you have to pay for an employee in this environment, hiring environment is, is. What I would call, you're gonna pay excessive amounts. That I, I think in, in, in this, in uh, economical. Uh, times, we, we can't afford to be hiring employees. Uh, we need to think outside the box. There are other ways to, I think, accommodate the same. Same needs without hiring an employee.
Hey, um, so on the um, on the amendment. Anyone else like to speak on Council O'Hara's amendment? Council O'Neal?
I agree with Council O'Hara. I think it's, you know, this is someplace where we can tighten our belts and uh. Not spend an extra 70,000 dollars. I just think that it's um, that can be absorbed by, by the, the fireman or, or the chief or, I, it's. I just think it's um, excessive. And I can just tighten our belts, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Hot point to Nolan.
Always thinking about the budget and where it's gonna go. I have to say that if Eric Smith is looking to add. Um, personnel for OSHA and following safety guidelines and inspections. Um, to me, 70,000 dollars with the amount of industrial accidents that we've seen over the last few years increasing. I think that's money well spent. If, if we could, we could save someone's life or someone's injury. By having someone that inspects and practices the OSHA laws. I think this is well worth it, and I will not be supporting the amendment.
Um, Council Majota.
I just hundred percent agree with um, Counsel Nolan.
Anyone else like to speak on the amendment? Counsel Gross.
Yeah, I'm, I'm surprised this hasn't been here. I know that um. Uh, the city and state exempt from OSHA. Um, not too long ago, but now we're no longer, thank God, because it was a different set of rules. Um, for a private industry or even, even contractors who are working for the city that had to be under OSHA, but the city did not. I find it um, rather surprising that anyone would want to pull off any safety. Measure here for our, the lives of our workers. Um, this is, you know, we, we have open trenches. We have uh, you know, just uh, you know, bucket trucks. We, there is just so, we have sewers, sewer gas. There are just so many different entities that are hazardous to our workers that. Again, as Counselor Nolan said, um, this is a, a piece that, that's been needed for a while, and I'm surprised it wasn't there.
Thank you. Um, anyone else like to speak on the amendment? Seeing none, uh. Council Neil, have you already spoken on the amendment?
Yeah, yes, I have. I can't speak again.
Um, if, if you make it short, because we are gonna be here till midnight, but go ahead, you can be, be short.
Is this OSHA inspector, is he inspecting? Our employees or is he inspecting? Um, businesses around the city? And have there been a lot of accidents that are, and that's why we're having this new um, employee?
Excuse me.
Have there been a lot of accidents in the city?
Um. I will, I will ask um, Bob Reavis or um, Chief Smith to um, answer that. Um, Chief Smith, um.
If I may, Madam, Madam Chair, the chief is here as an attendee, I mean. Anyway, it's for Council.
Would you speak on behalf of um, Council O'Neal's question?
I can speak to what the position, so this is the Assistant Emergency Services Director. Um, they're gonna be, it's, it's about OSHA. Compliance and safety for city employees and response to emergency situations. So if we, so it's, it's a little bit of both, right? So if there's an emergency situation. Um, within the city, that's what the emergency services responds to. The OSHA pieces for OSHA compliance um, amongst. For city employees, we had a gap assessment done that you all supported last year. Um, that pointed out several deficiencies that where we are not putting our employees first. Um, they were working very hard under, under Carol McMahon and former Assistant Chief Aiello. Covid hit and redirected everything, everyone's energy. So we're trying to get back on track to put our employees who are your residents and your constituents. Um, in a safe, possible work environment as possible.
Thank you. Um, so the amendment is to reduce the personal. Um, amount from 70,000 to zero, and this is for Department two ninety one. Um, let's vote on the amendment. Uh, Council Gilman, no. Gross.
No.
Grow.
No.
Majota.
No.
Memard.
No.
Nolan.
No.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
No.
The motion fails, two in favor, seven opposed. Um, and now.
Back to original.
Back to the original motion. Um, so um, everyone knows what the original motion is. It was made by Council Members, second by Council Gross. Um. Further discussion on the main motion. Um, Council Grow.
Do we, do we now have to do these individually?
I don't think so, because we.
Wait, does it? The motion failed, not the first original amendment, so we'll find out shortly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Right, so we have to see what the vote is.
Do you want me to restate the?
Um, sure, that would be helpful, go ahead.
So we're talking about fire emergency management, Department two nine one.
Hmm.
Personal services, 70,000 dollars. Ordinary maintenance, 61,250 dollars. Capital outlay, 2,500 dollars for a departmental total for fire emergency management of 123,750 dollars. This has been moved and seconded.
Go ahead, you move it, and we'll second by Council Gross. Exactly, okay, so um, roll call, is there a discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, our roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine favors, zero opposed.
Next department is Department two ninety two, police animal control. Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for police. Animal control as follows. Personal services, 136,889 dollars. Ordinary maintenance, 6,000 dollars. Departmental total for police animal control of 142,889 dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Votions made by Council Members, second by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine favors, zero opposed.
The next department is Department two nine six, shellfish control. Committee recommendation on a motion by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Gross. Budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for shellfish. Control as follows. Personal services, 133,842 dollars. Ordinary maintenance, 25,850 dollars. Departmental total, 159,692 dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, second by Council Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
The next department is Department fours, zero three, DPW. Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling. Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Gross. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for DPW. Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling as follows. Personal Services, twenty thousand dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, two million, eight hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Departmental total, two million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Emmard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine favors, zero opposed.
The next department, Department four one one, DPW Engineering. On a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Gross, Budget and Finance voted. Three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for DPW. Engineering as follows, personal services, sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, eight thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars for departmental total for DPW Engineering. Of sixty-nine thousand, fifty-five dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yeah.
Majota.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yeah.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine favors, zero opposed.
Department four twenty-one, DPW Public Works Administration, the committee recommendation on a motion by myself. Seconded by Counsel Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for DPW Public Works Administration as follows. Personal Services, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Departmental total, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Emmard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department four two three, DPW Snow and Ice Removal. Budget and Finance on a motion by Counselor Memheart, seconded by Counsel Gross. Voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations. For DPW Snow and Ice Removal as follows. Personal Services, one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, five hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred dollars. Capital Outlay, thirty-five thousand dollars for departmental total of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Worthly, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yeah.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Emmard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
I'm just thinking, there's got to be a way I could read these motions sort of like a bingo. You know, call. Department four seventy, DPW, Public Works, Public Services. Committee recommendation on a motion by Counselor Memheart, seconded by Counsel Gross. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the City Council approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for DPW Public Services as follows. Personal Services, one million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, eight hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Capital Outlay, fifty thousand dollars for a departmental total of two million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And I so move, does anybody have a matching number?
Second.
Motion's made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yeah.
Emmard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department four seven two, DPW Facilities Maintenance. On a committee, committee recommendation on a motion by Counselor Memheart, seconded by Counsel Gross. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the City Council approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for DPW Facilities. Maintenance as follows, personal services, three million. Three, three million, twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. Ordinary maintenance, two million, nine hundred and sixty-nine. Dollars.
Thousand.
Thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, excuse me. No, I'm getting, the numbers get hard to. Well, maybe I get tired, total departmental is five million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, is there a discussion? Counsel O'Neal.
Thank you, I just have a question on. It's page seventy-one of the binder. And it's under zero, one, four, seven, two, five, two. It's pest control. The seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, not disputing the amount, I'm just wondering, what is pest control? Is it spraying? And what is being sprayed and where is it being sprayed? What, what is pest control? Is it?
Rats, baby rats.
Where, where?
Wheels.
Food.
And, and where is, where, where is it being controlled and what's it being controlled by? I know, um, there's a constituent on the line. Who would very much like to know what is being. Put in the schools, um. In the vicinity of schools that is. Possibly poisonous.
Counselor, I, I would appreciate that we not be taking calls from our constituents, so we can.
I can take a call from her. She's on the line.
Oh, okay, so I, I sounded like she had called you, I'm sorry.
No, I'm not taking any calls.
Okay, okay, um, Counsel Nolan.
Um, that would be pest control for all city properties. There's def- definitely different methods that they would use. For removing or repelling pets. But I can assure you that all methods being used are within the law and within the confines of the Board of Health.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on, um? Okay, um, so we have a motion, we have a second, is there, um, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Oh, yeah.
Emmard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next department is Department four nine nine, DPW Central Services. Committee recommendation on a motion by Counselor Memheart, seconded by Counsel Gross. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for DPW Central Services. As follows, personal services, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Capital outlay, ten thousand dollars for departmental total. The DPW Central Services of one million, one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, discussion, counselors? Counsel O'Neal.
Thank you, uh, the capital outlay is for ten thousand dollars for. For a new truck for the storekeeper, who's the storekeeper? Lease payment to own new truck for storekeeper. Who's the storekeeper? That gets that.
I don't, I don't think we usually mention people's names by, um, on a budget review.
The storekeeper is.
Oh, what store, you asked.
The position.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Nolan.
In Central Services, we have a person that works for the city that is in, in charge of obtaining. Maintaining and filling all of the parts. Necessary for street work and for materials to be distributed throughout. The Department of Public Works. So this particular individual would have a truck, whether he had to go to EJ Prescott in, in Middleton to get a piece of pipe. Or if he had to go to New Hampshire Hydraulics to get, um, a, a cylinder for a machine. Uh, but the central services is basically like the Walmart for the DPW. And the person has a vehicle to go ahead and grab materials as they go.
All right, thank you.
You are a fountain of knowledge, I'm very impressed. Anyone else have a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Emmard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next up is Department five ten, Board of Health. Our committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Worthly, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for Board of Health as follows. Personal Services, five hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars for a departmental total for the Board of Health. Of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Gilman, yes, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
The Member, yes, Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal.
Yes.
Counsel Worthly.
Yes.
Um, yes, let's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department five forty-one, Counsel on Aging.
Counsel, I'd just like to announce that, um, I'm an ex-officio board member of the Counsel on Aging on the MGL two sixty-eight A. Um, I have no personal or financial benefit on this matter. So I'm voting on it.
So noted. The committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Worthly, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations for the Counsel on Aging as follows. Personal Services, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, capital outlay, thirty-five thousand dollars for a total. Department, Counsel on Aging, Department five four one of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Emmard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed.
We're halfway through on page. Nine now at sixteen, and I'm going to go ahead and take a break and let. Our city auditor Kenny Costa take over with the reading of the motions on the balance of these budgets.
Thank you. Counsel Nolan has a question.
Oh, Counsel Nolan, I bet he's going to want to take a recess. Do you? I can't hear you. You're muted.
I was going to say, yeah, the swap, I was wondering if we should take a three minute.
Sounds great, the motion to recess is a second by Counsel Worthly, we still need to do a roll call vote. Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Gross.
Majota.
I'm just going to say no.
Memheart.
Are you, are you serving around or are you going to bring us some snacks?
Memheart.
Of course, I'll be right there.
Yes. Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes, thank you.
All right, let's be back in, in, uh, three minutes, um, so nine, uh, thirteen. Everybody is back on. So, um. Say, um. We've got. Counsel O'Neal. Counsel Grow. Nolan. Majota, just there, um, who else, let's see. Ready, clear, okay. Good. So, so we are continuing, we are coming back from our recess.
Counsel Worthly.
Oh, Counsel Worthly is not even here.
Not in the frame.
Okay, so he's not in the frame.
He was just there.
Let's give him a sec.
Who is Counsel O'Hara?
For those of you who are on the phone, um, just to let you know. Um, after this session, um, we are going to then, um, get to the, um, the two public hearings. That are on the agenda. First one is, um. Public hearing.
Oh, three oh.
Twenty twenty-three. Oh, three oh.
Amendment.
The amendments for the resident only, um, parking on Apple. Blueberry and.
The Suffle Road across.
No, not Honey Suffle, no, um. Apple, Blueberry and Juniper. And then the other one is the conversion from private to public. So we will get to those after this, and I think we have probably about another hour, would you say? To go on this. Okay, so we're all back, welcome back, everybody. And, um, we will, um, continue with the fiscal twenty-four voting process, so. Counsel Memheart. Oh, Counsel, I'm sorry, our, our auditor is now going to make the motions and, uh, Counsel Memheart will, will move it. Um, and then Counsel Gross will continue to second.
Thank you, Counsel Gilman, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Department, Department five forty-three, Veterans Benefits. Committee recommendation on a motion by Counsel Memheart, seconded by Counsel Worthly. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations. For veterans' benefits as follows. Personal Services, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for a total of five hundred, nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Gilman, yes, Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Emmard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara. O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department five sixty-three, Tourism Commission. Committee recommendation on a motion by Counsel Memheart, seconded by Counsel Gross. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year. Twenty twenty-four appropriations for Tourism. Commission as follows, personal services, twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a total of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars.
I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Memheart, and it is seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion, Counsel O'Neal?
Thank you. Um. I'm just looking at the line item. We give a hundred thousand dollars to Discover Gloucester. Is that correct?
Yes.
And how many people are on the Tourism Commission?
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer this if I could, if you'd like.
Um, from BNF, go ahead, Counsel Worthley.
Sure, although I defer to Ms. Cahill. Um, I've served on the Tourism Commission years ago. We used to have a city staff person who was the Tourism Coordinator and an assistant to help with that. And since then, we've evolved to Discover Gloucester, which is a separate for our 501(c)(3). That is a destination marketing organization specifically taking on the role of what the Tourism Coordinator used to do. And they have their own board, which has a city representative on it. So, um, basically, it's it's done through a different model. And so it's not incurring the costs of personnel, pensions, insurance, health insurance, et cetera, et cetera. So this is a different way of doing it. And it's worked in Salem. It's worked in a lot of different communities very effectively. I didn't mean to raise my hand.
I'm sorry. Um, do you have anything to add, our CIO? Jill? Okay.
Uh, no, he just a couple of corrections. It's a 501(c)(4). But otherwise, he did great, Counsel Worthley. And we have, uh, two, two members on the board, um, by their bylaws, the Community Development Director and a representative from the mayor's office. But thank you, Counsel Worthley did a great job.
Thank you. Further discussion on this? Um, Counsel O'Neill.
Two members on the Discover Gloucester Board or the Tourism Commission?
This, the Discover Gloucester Board, um, and Madam Chair, if I may, through you on on the Tourism Commission. Um, we, uh, currently the Tourism Commission itself is not meeting. Um, one of the challenges that I think Counsel Worthley can back me up on too, in that I found his Community Development Director. We currently have the Discover Gloucester Board, the, and the Chamber also has a Tourism Committee. And so, so finding volunteers that for the Tourism Commission that were separate from those people already volunteering in the community um, was challenging. And also, we're, you know, still, the past few years, the Tourism Commission has been trying to figure out what their role is with all of these other bodies. So, um, the, we're working, we continue to work closely with both Discover Gloucester and the Chamber on those efforts. Um, and, you know, ponder what what the next move is with the Tourism Commission. Um, and there's been a lot of different ideas out there, but we haven't, we haven't made any movement in that yet.
So, I, I don't get an answer that I understood. How many people are on the Tourism Commission?
It's not, no, it's not currently appointed.
Okay.
It's not currently meeting.
Okay, so. Okay, thank you.
Um, further discussion, counselors? Counsel Majota.
I just wanna say I was a former member of the Tourism Commission. That's all.
Oh, awesome. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard. Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
And Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Kenny.
Thank you. Department 610 Library Administration Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for Library Administration as follows. Personal Services: $1,084,629. Ordinary Maintenance: $209,670. For a total of $1,294,299.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember and seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
I would just like to disclose that I'm a proprietor of the library and a former board member, but I have no interest financially or personally in the vote or budget.
Thank you, Counsel. Um, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 700 Debt Service Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for debt service as follows. Ordinary Maintenance: $12,477,833. Total the same, $12,477,833.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmembers, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Counsel Gross.
I just, I don't know if people are aware that there's, um, one million, uh, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in here, uh, that shifts out of the water. So, um, just try to remember that, that that would also be over on the water debt. Um, but it's, but it's been shifted over here to the general fund.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard. Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 820 Other State and County Assessments Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for Other State and County Assessments as follows. Ordinary Maintenance: $2,533,469. Total the same, $2,533,469.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 901 Health and Life Insurance Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for Health and Life Insurance as follows. Personal Services: $9,746,162. Total the same, $9,746,162.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmembers, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 903 Medicare Insurance Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for Medicare Insurance as follows. Personal Services: $870,870. Total the same, $870,000.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmembers, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Zero, uh, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 910 Workers' Compensation Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for workers' compensation as follows. Personal Services: $330,520. Total the same, $330,520.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmembers, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yeah.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 915 Unemployment Compensation Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for unemployment compensation as follows. Personal Services: $50,000. Total the same, $50,000.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmembers, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard. Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 921 Pensions Regular or Contributory Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for pensions regular contributory as follows. Personal Services: $11,832,218. Total the same, $11,832,218.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmembers, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard. Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 942 Regional School Assessments.
Um, and I'd just like to, um, to note that I am an appointed board member representing the city of Gloucester on the Essex Tech, um, North Shore Regional Vocational School, um, under MGL 268A. I have no personal or financial benefits on this matter, and I put on voting. Thank you.
Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council accept the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for regional school assessments for the North Shore Regional Vocational School as follows. Ordinary Maintenance: $1,790,170. Total the same, $1,790,170.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmembers, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
And Worthley.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 945 Liability Insurance Committee Recommendation on the Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriations for liability insurance as follows. Ordinary Maintenance: $870,000. Total the same, $870,000.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Department 970 Other Financing Uses. Note, this item is comprised of two items, $75,000 for athletic revolving fund and $30,000 for fiscal year 2026 certification of real and personal property. Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 other financing uses as follows. Transfers to other funds, $105,000. Total the same, $105,000.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
The next department is the school department. It's a bottom line budget, a $49,738,897. Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 school department budget in the amount of
And I so move.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember, seconded by Counsel Gross. And I just would note that, um, school committee chair Kathy Clancy is still on the call. Um, so is there a discussion? Um, Counsel Bro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, during the, uh, during the presentation, it was noted that there's a $650,000 delta between the proposed budget from the school committee and the mayor's budget. And it sounded like there was some, uh, work being done, uh, by the school, uh, department along with the superintendent and the administration to to bridge that gap, uh, because of some programs that I think are gonna be very well, very much needed in terms of vocational education. Um, I'd like to just encourage that, uh, conversation to continue in a productive way and and, um, and make sure that we're not sacrificing other programs, uh, in that process. Um, the vocational program is, uh, is certainly one that I think is going to be a great benefit to our district. Uh, but we have to make sure that we're, we're, we're ensuring the other programs don't get shortchanged as well. Uh, and if the administration or the school committee finds that, uh, that conversation is breaking down, I certainly would be supportive of coming back later, at a later time for a supplemental appropriation to, uh, to bridge that gap, because I think it's important that we maintain the integrity of our schools. So that's that.
Thank you, counselors. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
No.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one opposed. O'Neill, thank you.
And that concludes the general fund appropriations. The next item is fiscal year 24 general fund revenues. Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, Seconded by Counsel Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2024 general fund revenue, To recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four general fund revenue, including other financing sources in the amount of. One hundred and thirty-four million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
And I shall move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Member, seconded by Council Gross. Discussion councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yeah.
Ammar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Kara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Committee recommendation on a motion by Council Memheart seconded by Council Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four overlay. Uh, dash reserve for abatements and exemptions in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars.
And I shall move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Member, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memmar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Kara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
So just get informational purposes, so the total net available net funds per fiscal year twenty twenty-four is one hundred and thirty-three million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-three. Dollars, so we have a balanced budget on appropriations and revenues.
Right here.
Congrats.
Great. Thank you, Kenny. And John.
Administration.
Yeah, administration, of course. Thank you.
Uh, the next um, section is Community Preservation Act Funds, Waters, Sewer Waterways, and the Dorothy Talbot Rank enterprise funds. Uh, so next is votes on Community Preservation Act, committee recommendation on motion by Council Memheart seconded by Council Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the City Council approve the committee, Community Preservation Fund fiscal year twenty twenty-four revenues in the amount of eight hundred and six thousand dollars.
And I shall move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Member, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Donta.
Yes.
Ammar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Kara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Committee recommendation on a motion by Council Memheart seconded by Council Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council approve the Community Preservation Fund. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four expenditures in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-six thousand as follows. Open space reserve, eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Community housing reserve, eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Historic preservation reserve, zero. Administration, forty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. Debt service, historic preservation, two hundred and one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. General reserve, four hundred and eight, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total of eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
And I shall move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Member, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Ammar.
Yeah.
Nolan.
Yes.
Kara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next item is the Water Enterprise Fund. Uh, Water Enterprise Appropriations, Department four fifty, Water. Committee recommendation on motion by Council Gross, seconded by Council Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the City Council approve the total fiscal year twenty twenty-four Water Enterprise Appropriations. As follows, personal services, one million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Ordinary maintenance, three million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand and fifty-three dollars. Capital outlay. Two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Debt service, other financing uses, two million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. A total of eight million, one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and six dollars.
And I shall move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Member, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Council O'Hara.
Yeah, I just have a question Kenny probably can answer this, just for clarification, particularly for those at home. As far as the debt service, could you explain what that is and what it's for?
Yep, so uh, debt service, I mean, John can also uh, discuss this as well. So the debt service is anytime the city goes out and there's like a capital project. Um, the city does go out and they do issue out a ban, which is a bond anticipation note. Or a GOB, which is general obligation bond, and essentially these are like mortgage payments. This is paying back those monies that the city borrowed.
Specifically for water and.
Yeah, for waters.
Specifically, yeah, specifically for water projects.
Yeah, you know, see the same thing for sewer um, as well, and those for sewer projects. Or you might see the same thing for waterways, or in the general fund, which is government uh, type activities. So each fund has its own respective debt service um, categories.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Ammar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Kara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Water enterprise revenues, committee recommendation on motion by Council Gross, seconded by Council Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Water Enterprise revenues as follows. Total revenues, eight million, one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and six dollars.
And I shall move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Member, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a um, discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Yota.
Yes.
Ammar.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Kara.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next is the water rate. Committee recommendation on the motion by Council Gross, seconded by Council Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four water rate of ten dollars and forty-two cents per thousand gallons. For a twelve-month billing period effective July first, twenty twenty-three, retroactive to April first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three. This is a ninety-five cent or a ten point oh one percent increase over fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Water rate of nine dollars and forty-seven cents per thousand gallons.
And I do, I do move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Member, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Council O'Hara.
Um, I wasn't at at the budget hearing on this. Could you explain the reason why we need to increase on? Over ten percent?
So in in general, what we have is um. Debt service on water projects increasing from year to year. Um, and some other aspects of of ordinary maintenance increasing in the same manner. Um, we don't really have, we don't have in this case, um, in the water rep, Water Enterprise Fund. Um, a retained earnings or free cash that we could use to reduce the impact of the increasing expenditures. So it's all going to be borne by the rate.
So what's the al- alternative? You, if 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 we didn't increase it ten percent, what would happen?
We didn't increase it by ten percent, then uh, whatever the increase was, if there was any increase. Um, would have to be taken from proposed expenditures. Because we need to have a balanced budget. So for example, um. If we maintain the rate this year, the same uh, for twenty twenty-four, at the same level as twenty twenty-three. Uh, we would have to reduce expenditures by, oh, let's just say round numbers, um, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so expenditures being projects that you would like to do.
No, expenditures being how how the the system operates daily. So it would impact the system daily operations um, by ten percent. And there are a number of things that are within um, those expenditures which can't be reduced. Debt service. Um, the contract with Veolia. Um, so, which basically represents about half of the total budget. So we'd be looking at half of the budget to be reduced by seven hundred thousand dollars. It would be a huge hit.
Any further?
It's ten, ten percent, ten percent is is. I would consider excessive. Uh, I, you know, the people, as as I've said publicly, people are, you know, they they can't, they they. They can't pay their water bills. I had a constituent call me the, or email me the other day, same same thing. You know, why, why these exorbitant? Water bills. Well, what, what, you know, the people are are bleeding. Um, you know, all the way through the, you know, I, in general, but the water, water is something that they they see that quarterly bill and. It it keeps going up and up and up. People can't flush their toilet is is basically what it's coming down to. When that that's, you know, when people take that for granted, but you know, when people are calling. Crying over their their water bill, we're looking at ten percent increase.
Um, Council Growth and Majota and Gross in that.
Um, I guess, I guess I, I I would like to remind um, my fellow councilors that. Not a couple of minutes ago, we just voted both the revenue and the expenditures of eight million, one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. That is what makes up the water rate. So if you had a problem. With the water rate, you probably should have brought that up during the time when we're talking about expenditures and revenue. Because without the water rate, we don't make the revenue that we just voted. And at this point, frankly, and I don't mean, I don't mean this to be too offensive, but. We're showboating at this point over the rate. The rate is what the rate's going to be because we just voted. The amount of money for the expenditures and revenues that create that rate. So w- we, the nine of us, bear that responsibility unanimously. And at this point, to 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 argue about the rate is is really, uh, there's there's no sense to it at that point. If you want to make a an issue about, it should be on the on the expenditures and revenue side.
I'm not trying to argue about or make an issue a showboat. Council Growth.
So.
Council Majota.
Uh, my question is, what is, and I probably should ask uh, Michael for this, but what is the average um, water cons- consumption? Uh, per gallons, per like, you know, household in Gloucester?
Um, I could get that for you, counselor. I don't have that off the top of my head.
That's it. Thank you.
Council Gross. And then Council O'Neill.
Well, I I mean, I was hoping that maybe Council O'Hara would have an amendment because. Talking in generalities doesn't really help um, us, the administration, or the constituents. If there's specific places that are outlined in the budget that he has a mind to, then he can bring an amendment forward, but otherwise. I'm not quite certain what, where we're getting at um, as far as that goes.
Uh, Counselor, Counselor Gross, I'm I'm asking general questions, just pe- people are asking. Uh, if if they're not, the questions aren't asked, I can't provide an answer to constituents.
Um, Council O'Neill and then Council Memheart.
Um, thank you. I didn't realize that, I mean, maybe this. Increased vote should have come before. The enterprise revenues and expenditures vote, because I didn't realize that that was the situation. However, sitting here as we're talking, um. Um, was it John Dunn that said we would need to make up seven hundred thousand dollars, right? That's about seven hundred thousand dollars. Sitting here, I'd come up with one, two, three, three forty, four forty, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of. Cuts. In one, two, three, four, five different places, um. That could make up, that could help make up for that. And I'd be happy to tell you what they are if you want to hear it.
Um.
We've already approved.
Yeah.
The appropriations.
We've already approved the appropriations, Council O'Neill, so I think we have to um. Continue in this discussion. Um, so Counselor Memheart.
Uh, just weighing in on the question of. Water rates in our community, um. Because of the age of our infrastructure, because of our granite ledges. Uh, while we're well endowed with water, the water distribution system is costly. As somebody who's been in the ice business for forty years. Um, our current water rate is half of what it was scheduled to be. A short time ago during the Kirk administration, when she did a tax shift. To defer, I mean, we were, we were over fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars per thousand gallons. And she def- she implemented a tax shift back in her administration that we approved. That dramatically reduced that for a period of time, so now it's climbing back up again. But one way or another, we have to pay for the expense, expensive running a water treatment plant and a distribution system in the community, in our island communities of Gloucester.
Anyone else like to speak on this discussion? Council Grow and then Council Gross.
I would just point out and just remind people that as high as this seems, the amount of, you know, require requests and. And demands for improved infrastructure costs are going to add to this. Figure over the next few years, regardless of what we do. So, you know, we're 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 trying, I think. Some of my colleagues are trying to to, you know. Have our cake and eat it too. This stuff is going to cost us more money. We can't demand more services, can't we do, demand more infrastructure. Can't demand more borrowing and more breadth of our of our services and not have a way to pay for it. That's why it's an enterprise account. It has to pay for itself, and unfortunately, that's that's what we've done. We, we made this. Vote and we've, we've, the 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 confirmation of the ten forty-two per thousand is simply that. It's a confirmation. That we are going to raise the rate to that amount so that we can pay for what services we are expecting from the water department to provide.
Um, Council O'Neill.
I have a question. This budget has to be approved by the mayor, correct?
Recommended.
And then he has until June thirtieth to confirm it. And or change anything, is that correct?
No.
Kenny, would you like to explain that?
Yeah, so the the mayor has already recommended their budget. That was the budget that was that you received, I believe that was May.
Right.
On May third, that was the budget um, at that point, on May third, that was when the City Council accepted the budget, so we now have forty-five days. We have until Friday to approve the budget, and if the budget's not approved by the City Council, then it becomes the mayor's budget. At that point.
So without our affirmative vote, it becomes automatically accepted.
Um, any further discussion, councilors? Oh, sorry, Council Gross.
Just like to point out that. Um, and Council O'Hara brought up clarification on the the debt service. Fifty-one percent of this, you know. Seven hundred and twelve dollars and eight, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, um, seven hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollar. Increase is, the debt service is three hundred and sixty-six. Thousand, nine hundred and sixty, which is fifty-one percent of this increase. So as we keep moving forward and uh, replacing uh, surface pipes, um, Rust Island, if we go in and do these other private roads. That's going to climb exponentially, and next year we're going to be, or in future years, we're going to be looking at a much higher debt service rate, which gives us no. Which does not increase our level of service on, for repairs and maintenance. But I just want everybody to be aware that fifty-one percent of this increase, the increase, is debt service.
So um, I'd like to speak on this because I have not yet spoke. So. We've heard so much in the last three or four months about Rust Island, um, Tascal Court, Biscuit Head Point. Um. I mean, I have to share with you that my whole neighborhood, we all have wells. We have no fire hydrants in my neighborhood. Um, and no deep pipes for residents. And I've I've been quiet about it because I just, I I just see how all these other areas are much more in a difficult situation. And I don't want to create like a indoors box of additional expenses. So um, I do think that we have to be mindful of the fact that all these issues that, you know, all all of our residents are rightfully concerned about. We have to think about how we are going to fund them, and this is how we're going to have to fund them, and. The, if we don't support this, then we're going to go back to what happened ten years ago when we had to have a boil water. Um, issue because all our water was contaminated and that was a problem. So we have to keep maintaining our infrastructure. It's old, but we have to keep on a progressive path. And then we have to be mindful of the residents who are afraid of fires and and don't even have running water. So we have to keep going on this, and I'm going to support this. Anyone else like to speak on this? Uh, Council O'Neill and then Council O'Hara.
I just want to make a general um. Statement that I personally believe that we're spending money in 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 all the wrong places. Not all the wrong places, but there are, there are places, and I understand this is an enterprise fund, maybe it shouldn't be, maybe it should be. But we're spending an awful lot of money on tourism. We give a hundred thousand dollars to Gloucester, four hundred.
So let's stay on this, this item.
Well, this is, this is, I just came up with five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Hundred thousand for this one, hundred thousand for that one, hundred and forty thousand for Eastern Avenue that had zero piles. Um, eighty-five thousand dollars here. Uh, for, or whatever. And then.
On this, on this matter, please, please stay on this.
Okay, um, I just think that we're spending our money in all the wrong, in many of the wrong places. And we could, that that money could be used elsewhere to help pay the further cost of this water bill.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Um, Council O'Hara.
Thank you. I just want to thank all all my fellow councils for. Thank you. I just want to thank all, all my fellow counselors for commenting. And the explanations, I think it's extremely important for the constituents, people at home that, that are looking at the bottom lines to understand what is going on in Gloucester related to the, to the water distribution system. As Counselor Gross, Counselor Grow had mentioned, and, and I'm not disagreeing that we, we are dealing with a, a archaic uh, water distribution system that we've, as a city, have been upgrading. And as has been said by all of us, that comes with a tremendous expense. So it's, I, although this has been a time-consuming uh, discussion, I think it's extremely important and healthy to have this so that the constituents, the taxpayers understand why the numbers are what they are. So, thank you.
Your comments are appreciated. Thank you, counselor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counselor Gilman, yes. Counselor Gross.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
You're muted.
O'Neal.
No.
Worthly. You're muted, Counselor Worthley.
Yes, sorry about that.
Um, the motion passes. Um, eight in favor, one opposed. O'Neal, thank you.
Now we move on to this sewer enterprise fund. So the sewer enterprise appropriations, Department for Forty Sewer committee recommendation on the motion by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four sewer enterprise appropriations as follows. Personal services, one million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and three dollars. Ordinary maintenance, five million, sixty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Capital outlay, three hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Debt service, other financing uses, three million, eighteen thousand, sixty-three dollars for a total of ten million, three hundred and six thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion is made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
No.
Worthley.
Yes.
We're going to have to go through each one now.
Okay. Um, so we, should we just start before I calculate? Okay. So we're going to have to go through each one individually now, um, because we have a person that is not approving this. So um, so we're going to start with personal services. So um.
Personal services, personal services, one million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and three dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counselor Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors? On personal services, I'm seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yeah.
Come on.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Ordinary maintenance.
Ordinary maintenance, five million, sixty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
No.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one opposed. Counsel O'Neal.
Capital outlay, three hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counselor Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Jota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Debt service, other financing uses, three million, eighteen thousand and sixty-three dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Sewer enterprise revenues, committee recommendation on a motion by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four sewer enterprise revenues as follows. Total revenues, ten million, three hundred and six thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal. O'Neal.
No.
Worthly.
Yes.
This is the only ones who can vote this, right? Okay, so um, the yeses have it. Eight in favor, one opposed. O'Neal.
Sewer rate, committee recommendation on a motion by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four sewer rate of eighteen dollars and sixteen cents per a thousand gallons for a twelve-month billing period effective July first, twenty twenty-three, retroactive to April first, twenty twenty-three. This is a one dollar and four cent or a six point oh five percent increase over fiscal year twenty twenty-three sewer rate of seventeen dollars and twelve cents per a thousand gallons.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Counsel Grow.
I just want to take this moment to point out that we have the, uh, the, the looming presence of the secondary treatment facility uh, in our, in our not-too-distant future. It's going to be incumbent upon uh, us uh, to support the administration in pursuing any and all opportunities for grants and, and, and federal funding, state funding to drive down the cost to taxpayers. But uh, that rate uh, at eighteen sixteen per thousand is, is going to go up in the coming years. Nobody should be surprised when it happens. It's unfortunate, but um, it's part of the problem of kicking the can down the road as we've done for, for, for decades in the city and, and we're, we're paying for it now.
Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
No.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one opposed. O'Neal.
Next, the votes on the Talbot Rank Enterprise Fund. So first Talbot Rank Enterprise Appropriations Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Talbot Rank appropriations as follows. Personal services, two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Ordinary maintenance, ninety-eight thousand dollars. Capital outlay, seven thousand dollars. Debt service, other financing uses, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. A total of three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yep.
Majota.
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
The yeses have it. What a taste to say.
Yes. Yes.
I'm nine in favor, zero opposed. I'm sorry. I just, just, thank you.
Next is Talbot Rank Enterprise Revenues. Committee Recommendation on the Motion by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Talbot Rank Enterprise Revenues as follows. Total revenues, three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next, our Waterways Enterprise Fund uh, Appropriations Committee Recommendation on the Motion by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Waterways Enterprise Appropriations as follows. Personal services, four hundred and one thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Ordinary maintenance, two hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Capital outlay, seventeen thousand dollars. Debt service, other financing uses, forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. A total of seven hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Come on.
Yeah.
Nolan.
Yep.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next is Waterways Enterprise Revenues. Committee Recommendation on the Motion by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Waterways Enterprise Revenues as follows. Total revenue, seven hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan. Nolan, you're muted. Yes.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, next is the revolving funds. Uh, first, the schools. Free Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the city council continue acceptance of uh, MGL chapter forty-fourth, section fifty-three E and a half. School Department Revolving Funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as specified. Fund oh three oh two summer school program, spending limit, ten thousand dollars. Fund oh three oh five transportation, spending limit, two hundred thousand dollars. Fund oh three oh six ROTC, spending limit of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Fund oh three oh eight preschool, spending limit of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Fund oh three oh nine, professional development, thirty thousand dollars. Oh three, one one, non-resident student tuition, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Fund oh three one seven, West Parish Before School Program, spending limit of thirty-five thousand dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next is the City Revolving Funds Committee Recommendation on Motion by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend the city council authorize, authorize the city to establish revolving funds for certain city departments under Master and Law, chapter forty-four, fifty-three E and a half for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, with specific receipts credited to each fund, the purpose for which each fund may be spent and the maximum amount that may be spent from each fund for the fiscal year as specified. Fund three one zero zero, 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 building use, spending limit, sixty thousand dollars. Fund three one oh four, city hall user, five thousand dollars spending limit. Fund three one oh five, court repairs, spending limit, two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Fund three one oh six, septic loan, Board of Health, spending limit, fifteen thousand dollars. Fund three one oh seven, vaccine, also Board of Health, spending limit, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Fund three one one one, fire training, spending limit of five thousand dollars. Three one one two, radio frequency study, spending limit, ten thousand dollars. Fund three one one four, solid waste recycling, spending limit of ten thousand dollars. Fund three one one five, city clerk, preservation of permanent records, spending limit, fifteen thousand dollars. Fund three one one seven, vacant building, spending limit of eighty thousand dollars. Fund three one one eight, lanes, coal fish shack, spending limit of thirty-five hundred dollars. Fund three one two zero, various fire trainings, spending limit of fifteen thousand dollars. Fund three one two one, new stadium maintenance, but spending limit of twenty thousand dollars. Fund three one two two, stage, uh, stage four park maintenance, spending limit of ten thousand dollars. Fund three one two three, police student officer training and equipment, spending limit of thirty-five thousand dollars. Fund three one two four, fire to commission, uh, drill training, spending limit of five thousand dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthly.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Now the last item of the budget, fiscal year twenty-four, school food service revolving fund. Committee Recommendation on the Motion by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the city council appropriate two million dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating costs of the Gloucester School Food Service Program and two million dollars for estimated receipts from fees charged to users of the services provided by the Gloucester Food Service Program in accordance with Master and Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Counsel O'Hara.
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering possibly, uh, if John Dunn or Kenny could even just, again, explain for people. This is obviously a large dollar value. What, how this is broken down and what this money is used for.
Yep. So this is essentially, it's a special revenue fund. It's its own fund. Um, this is for to pay for salaries um, to run the school for school food service program. Um, I know they have a small equipment just to buy some, you know, some small equipment items that as needed um, for the, uh, for the, the prep area for the kitchen. Uh, but it's also, it's for paper costs, food costs. Um, and then there's also reimbursements from the federal government and then also from the state. So, and then it's also the sales um, you know, from running the school, school, school food service program. So there's various types of receipts that do come into the, uh, into the school from service, uh, program.
Thank you.
That helpful, counselor?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, for this last roll call, I'm going to say everybody's formal names. Um, so we've had a discussion and now we're going to do a roll call vote. So, um, Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Yay.
As a counsel member.
Back to Counsel Memard.
No more.
Council, Member, go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, I just, I'd like to thank everybody for their thoughtful consideration of the city's budget, the fiscal year 2024 budget. The General Fund, Community Preservation Act, and the four enterprise funds does total approximately one hundred and fifty-four million dollars, and that is an increase of approximately seven point eight million dollars and three point, five point three four percent increase from the last fiscal year 2023 budget, which reflects our increasing fixed costs such as pension obligations, debt service, healthcare, paving, school building and education costs. Through the efforts of the Mayor's Office and the support of the City Council, the city has adopted a capital plan funding and free cash distribution policy, which set, sets aside forty percent of any free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund and twenty percent to the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund. And there is approximately seven million dollars in Capital Project Stabilization Fund that is available to fund capital items going forward in fiscal year 2024. There's also approximately four point two million dollars in the Building Maintenance Stabilization that is available for to fund building maintenance items in fiscal year 2024. There's also approximately seven million dollars in the general stabilization set aside for rainy days, quote unquote rainy days. And we are all thankful that we have these reserves and we have the support of the Mayor's Office team. These stabilization funds are an incredibly important insurance policy for the city in any upcoming emergency. With Gloucester's four-hundredth anniversary, our city has a lot to reflect on and to celebrate. We would not be able to execute Gloucester's mission or achieve its goals without the efforts of our talented employees, thoughtful insight and guidance from our local, state, and federal elected officials, City Council, School Committee, and the many, many, many volunteer members of our boards, committees, and commissions. With that being said, budget represents a considerable effort on the part of the council, the administration, the school committee, the city auditor's office, to wring value from every taxpayer's dollar. And we all commend, all of us and all of those who have participated in this process for long, long hours, including tonight, and careful attention and discussion and review and digging into the details. We would certainly like to especially thank the City Clerk, Ensenos, and her staff, City Auditor Kenny Costa and his staff, Sherry White, Clerk of Committees, and all those who shared with us, shared with us in this long journey and provided us with their great and heartfelt support, professional support, so thank you all.
Right back at. Scott Member, Tony Gross, and Jeff Worthley for a job well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Council O'Neil, you have a question?
Yes, I apologize for this, but I think I found an addition mistake on page forty-five of the budget. I know we, it's been approved and all that, and I neglected to bring it up at the time I was talking about other stuff. On page forty-five, count number fifty-three, five-three-zero-zero-two-five. The line item is fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars. And when I add up all these sub, all the things below it, I get sixty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So what was the line item number again at the top?
So it's, the, the main number is one, one twenty-two oh fifty-two, and then it's fifty, five-three-zero-zero-two-five, Train OM. Do you see that?
Yeah.
And it says fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars. When I add one thousand, five thousand, when I add all that up, I get sixty thousand, seven hundred. I've added it sixty thousand times.
What section are you in, Tracy?
I am in the repair facility to meet OSHA, so must be fire.
What tab?
I'm on page forty-five. Does that help you?
Oh, you said fifty-five.
No, forty-five.
Tab two, page forty-five.
Yes, she is correct. So he's gonna have to find ten thousand dollars somewhere else.
Add ten thousand to it, right?
Again, you know, the, the detail, the explanation here doesn't always add up. In fact, this one was reviewed during the Mayor's Budget Review, and we, we asked the Fire Department to reduce it to the current year's budget. So if you notice, the current year's budget, the 2023 budget is fifty thousand, seven hundred, and the 2024 is the same amount.
You probably forgot to adjust something.
So there's no, there's no commitment by that detailed information, it's not a commitment to, to expect.
Oh, okay.
They don't have to add up.
Okay, could, every other department, well, that I added it, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Chief Smith has to check, no, his listing's there.
Thank you, so, next order of business. John and Kenny, if you're, you're ready to get out of here, you've deserved it, drive carefully, you both have a ride to go. And so helpful for you to be here present with ourselves.
Thank, thank you all, it was, it went, it went well.
Thank you, how about, Congress, how about a round of applause for these two delegates?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You gotta stay with me, though, sorry.
Oh, I think she was heading for the door, too.
Thank you. bundle up and leave, our next order of business, Madam Clerk, is, under her counsel vote, we're going to finish that, and it's the City Council Letter of Support to the State Legislators, we got any funding for preschool lunch meals for all. Council Gross, seeing you did this work, do you want to read your letter to the counselors before we vote it?
Point of order, may?
I don't think you want to wait till I find it.
Oh, okay. Council Worthley.
Yes. I hate, I hate point of order sometimes, it's just an information thing, it's just a question of procedural. I know there were two hearings that we put towards, to the end of the meeting, and we were hoping if the budget process didn't take as long as it did, we might have got to it. Out of fairness, people who are waiting, if the Council, Council President, we want to continue those, I'd respect that. I personally am not feeling well, I think I mentioned that to you earlier today, and I don't know that I have much left in me, and I usually have good stamina for these things, but I'm not feeling well, so I just want to see if we can continue those two, two weeks out potentially, before we go through the next half hour of our meeting to determine that.
So I guess my, my, my feeling is that there are about, there are still twelve people here. I would say we should open up the public hearing and listen to the people that are here, and if we decide that we want to continue at the next meeting, we can vote to do that with a majority, so in that way, we're being respectful to the fact that they spent their whole night waiting, and, and then we will just continue it, so no one will lose out. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that, so. That.
Yeah, I just want to, I don't know how much, how much left, how much is left of the meeting if they have to wait longer.
But we knew that this would be an exhausting meeting, so. So do you, do you want to read it, Tony, or do you want to just explain it?
Hold on, I think I got it here in a second. Okay.
It's in the packet. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so it's, there's a letter to the senators and also a letter to the representatives, but I'll just read the the letter to the, just one of them, so it's, Dear Senators, we the Gloucester City Council are writing to request your support in securing funding for the universal school meals in the upcoming FY 2024 budget with the hope of making the program permanent. As you are aware, access to regular and nutritious meals is crucial for children's physical and cognitive development, overall health and academic success. However, a significant number of students in Gloucester and all over Massachusetts face food insecurity, making it challenging for them to thrive in the classroom. Studies have consistently shown that hunger and malnutrition have detrimental effects on children's learning abilities, concentration, and behavior, hindering their educational progress and success in life. Gloucester Public Schools have over a sixty percent high-needs student population, and being able to provide good, consistent, healthy meals to students is critical to their ability to learn and succeed. The long-term effects of COVID nineteen, of the COVID nineteen pandemic are still being realized. Not only have our students been set back academically, but the issue of food insecurity has increased as many families are facing economic hardships due to job instability and dramatic increases in the cost of food and housing. Despite the valiant efforts of schools and community organizations to provide meals during these challenging times, the demand for school assistance is higher than ever, placing an immense burden on the already strained resources. Massachusetts has a proud history of prioritizing education and the well-being of its residents. It is imperative that we continue to lead by example and invest in our children's future. By allocating funds for universal school meals, we can ensure that no child in our state goes hungry, and every student has an equal opportunity to succeed academically and beyond. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. We appreciate your dedication to serving the residents of Massachusetts and your commitment to improving the lives of our children. We look forward to hearing about your support for funding free universal school meals in the outcome, upcoming budget, respectfully, all of us.
And I, and I, if you make your motion?
And I move that we all sign it and send it to the, to the, to the Joint Committee of the, of Ways and Means.
And I, and I will second it. Is there a discussion, counselors? Counselor Grow.
Just very briefly, food insecurity and hunger in our students is a real thing, and without this funding and without this program, children who otherwise would be receiving nutritious food at school would not, and that will, that will impact every aspect of their lives, it will impact the lives of other students in, in the, in the district, is a critical obligation that we need that, you know, get our, our legislator, legislatures to back. And I fully support it, thank you, Tony, for writing it.
I would just like to, to add that Council Gross really took the lead and pulled this together, and it took a, quite a bit of work, and it's totally appreciated. He did this on our behalf and for all the children of Gloucester, so, thank you, Council Gross. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, we're ready to roll call, Council Gilman, yes, Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Absolutely.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Member.
Yes, and do, thank you, Tony.
Council Nolan.
Yes, thank you, Tony.
Council O'Hara.
Yes, and thank you to Council Gross.
Council O'Neil.
Yes, thank you, Tony.
And Council Worthley.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, let's have it, nine in favor, zero opposed, we have to sign it at City Hall in the next couple of days. So let's make sure we get that done because we don't want to miss the deadline, because the Conference Committee can be taking this up any day, so as soon as we all get our signatures on it, we need to get that to the State House. Via email, and it's important. Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero three zero, and Mary Gloucester Court of Wardens, it's chapter twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section Twenty-two, dash two seventy, point one. Residents sticker parking only by adding Apple Street, both sides from the end of Brown's Field Playground to Corliss Landing from May first through September fifteenth, and by adding Juniper Road, excuse me, both sides from Honeysuckle Road across Apple Street into its end where it intersects with.
Okay, then, then.
Where it intersects with Corliss Avenue from May first through September fifteenth, and by adding Blueberry Lane for its entire length, starting May first through September fifteenth.
Okay, so I'd like to open the public hearing, and I'd like, I'd like to ask if anybody here would like to speak in favor or in opposition. Helmut, and.
Do you get two entries?
Yeah, so far, yeah. Okay, I'm welcome, and if you would introduce yourself in your address, you have three minutes to speak to the council, and thank you for your patience.
Okay, yeah, this is Bill Helmut, I live at seven Juniper Road, right here in Gloucester, down at Corliss Landing. And I am opposed to the proposition for the resident parking only signs for several reasons. One is it opens up parking on our neighborhood streets to basically any Gloucester resident. Right now, we're on a private road, private parking. We do have the right to regulate our own parking, but once those signs go up, then any resident who lives in Gloucester can park on our streets. And basically, that means that our streets become overflow parking for Corliss Landing, which currently it is not. In, in a extreme case, any guest that parks at my house that doesn't have a resident sticker is subject to, is subject to ticketing, even though they're parked in front of my house on my property, which really doesn't make any sense. And most importantly, i- it does absolutely nothing to address the traffic and noise issues, nor the repair of the roads, and these were problems causing quality of life issues that were uncovered at the last meeting by Council O'Hara. He asked about quality of life and the issues that came up with noise on, noise on Apple Street and the speed of the traffic. A parking regulation is not going to cure any of that. As a matter of fact, the proposed signage, with the proposed signage, I could drive my truck and my boat and trailer down Apple Street, launch my boat, come back up with a resident sticker, park anywhere on Apple Street that I wanted to, anywhere on Blueberry I wanted to, anywhere on Apple, on Juniper Road that I wanted to, because I have a resident sticker. I don't believe that's what the residents are actually looking for as a solution. So what I'm proposing is that, like the city, cities of Boston, Arlington, and in particular, one of the examples that I sent to Jeff Worthley was from the city of Medford, and it basically outlines what the rules are for privy, parking on private roads. So I'm suggesting that instead of the city installing resident parking only signs, that we address the issue by creating an ordinance that specifically spells out that public parking is not allowed on private ways. It should also include how neighbors can enforce the parking restrictions as described in the Medford documents that I actually forwarded to the entire city council a while back. And as the second part of the solution, if the city wants to post signs to satisfy the request from the neighbors, I would suggest signage that reads private, private way, guest parking only, something to that effect, kind of a gentle reminder that you're on private property, you don't belong here.
Okay, Bill, I have to, I have to say that your three minutes is up right on the nick of time, so thank you so much for staying so late.
Okay.
Thank you. Next candidate raised in public hearing. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Gretel Seeley, I live at ten Juniper Road, and, and I support what Bill Helmut just said, I think, you know, I've lived here for fifteen years, three doors down from Corliss Landing, I've never had an issue with parking in the neighborhood, and I'm concerned that this resident parking thing is just going to create an issue that doesn't resolve the, the real problem, which is, you know, the traffic in the public road, in the private roads and, and the repair, so I really hope that the, the council will vote no on this and let us solve the, the road problems in a different way, thanks.
Yeah.
So my name is Henry Morgan, and I'm at eleven Juniper Road, and I oppose this. I mean, we have no problems here, and I don't wanna create a, a problem that we don't have.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak in favor or opposition? Oh, Bob Ryan? A traffic commissioner?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
You sure can.
Good evening, Council President Gilman, other city councillors, Madam Clerk Zeno, and Clerk White. My name is Bob Ryan, Free Play Court here in Gloucester. I am speaking tonight in support of the resident sticker parking only orders before you this evening for Apple Street, Juniper Road, and Blueberry Lane. The resident sticker parking only ordinances are relatively new in the motor vehicle and traffic schedule ordinances. The ordinance came about to improve the safety, quality of life in neighborhoods, and mitigate traffic congestion and illegal parking. Councilor Jackie Hady and I worked together back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen in the Lanesville area to eliminate problems around the quarries. In two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, numerous streets were made resident sticker parking only to again improve the quality of life in neighborhoods around the beaches named by Good Habits Beach, Winger Chief, Niles, and State Fort Park. Now, the location for resident sticker parking only was Ford Square. Again, the purpose of the ordinance, quality of life, safety, and reduction of illegal parking. Tonight, Corliss Landing is yet another area of the city and its surrounding streets that need attention and regulations. A petition has been presented for over twenty-five residents requesting help, and no other incident or area has a petition been put forth representing resident sticker parking only. Under the previous mayor, the city council, Chip Pason and Legal, and the Gloucester City Council made over thirty streets resident sticker parking just two years ago. Today, the city has over sixty streets with resident sticker parking. Forty percent are on private roads. I don't mean to contradict Mr. Helmuth, but we've done it, uh, over forty percent of the time in our ordinances already. In closing, I ask that you address the concerns of the residents around Corliss Landing by passing these orders before you this evening, again, to alleviate trash, noise, illegal parking in the neighborhoods, thus improving the residents' quality of life, just as the council has done in previous neighborhoods throughout this great city. Again, thank you for the time.
Any further, um, comments in favor or in opposition from members of the public? Um, any additional people that have not spoken to our council? I see none. Um, councillors, um, to Council Worley's earlier comment, do we wanna continue with this public hearing right now and, um, get to the vote, or do we want to, do we want to take a fresh breather and, um, continue this to the next meeting where we left off? Um, does anyone have a motion to continue? Um, Council Nolan, Chair of ONA?
I'd like to make a motion to continue these meetings, these hearings, um, to a later date for a fresher mind. Um, it may not be as complex or time-consuming as the, uh, budget, but this is gonna have an awful lot of, uh, discussion, um, that I can see going a lot longer than midnight, just on this alone. I can tell by Jason's look, there's definitely gonna be discussion on this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's just do this one public hearing first, and then we'll do the next one as a separate vote. We should, we should take them up separately, because we've started this one. Okay, so this is, this is, um, so this is a motion by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara to, um, to continue this public hearing where we left off, which is continuation of public comments um, to the next meeting. Um, is there a discussion on that motion? Um, Council Worley?
Yes, thank you. Um, do we set it to a certain date, or is it just to the next meeting, or what's your expectation for when people are here to come again? At our next meeting in two weeks?
Certain date, yep, June twenty-seven.
Okay. I support that.
Any further discussion, councillors? Okay, we need a majority vote to continue this. So, um, Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow? Council Grow? Council, uh, Council, thumbs up.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. I thought I was unmuted.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memmar?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worley?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. So we're continuing that public hearing. Uh, do I need to say that this is being continued and gavel this? No, because I don't wanna go. Okay, thank you. It's been a long night. Appreciate it. I, I would, I would refrain from the gavel, so, all right.
So the next public hearing is twenty-twenty-three dash zero three one to American Gloucester Code of Ones, this chapter twenty-one, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article One in General, Section twenty-one dash one prerequisite to accepted, acceptance of ways by striking current Section twenty-one dash one and adding a new Section twenty-one dash one prerequisite to acceptance of ways.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there is a motion to continue.
So moved.
Don't ask him, but you're speaking first.
Um, motion made. Council Grow and seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion on the motion to continue? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross? Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memmar?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worley?
Yes, thank you.
Um, the motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed, continue it till June twenty-seven. Thank you. Um, and to those who stayed so late on the call tonight, uh, thank you. Um, the next order of business, Madam Clerk?
It's the city council statement regarding the four-hundredth celebration.
I'm gonna see if I can read all these names correctly. So, two thousand and three marks four hundred years since the what?
The two thousand and three.
Oh, I said, two thousand and twenty-three marks four hundred years since the English Dorchester Company landed on our shores. Gloucester sits on the ancestral homeland of the Pawtucket people and their neighbors in Massachusetts, Nip, Nipmuck, and Pennacook, and Wampunya. Did I say that right? Wampunya tribes. One pop.
I think it's Wampen.
Wa- Wampenau. Wampenau, thank you, Council Nolan. I don't even have to look at you, but I recognize your voice. Thank you. Um, please enjoy the year-long and multiple events throughout two thousand and twenty-three, most of which will be free or low cost. Visit GloucesterMA400.org for a list of upcoming events. Like and share the Gloucester four hundred Facebook page. To receive major event notifications by email, send a request to info@gloucesterma400.org. And, um, let's keep enjoying this four-hundredth year celebration and, and encourage people that we talk to to, to, um, to find out how they can get all this information and be part of this, um, exciting year. So, thank you. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Council's request to the mayor.
Okay, any requests to the mayor, councillors, and I think you all know you can put them in, um, on a weekly basis if you'd like, if we want to make this short. Um, but, um, we'll start with, um, Council Gross?
Uh, I already talked to them. Thanks.
Council Grow?
I'm all good. Thank you.
Council Majota?
I will send an email.
Council Memmar?
We are talking.
Counselor Yolan?
All good.
Council O'Hara?
Thank you.
Council O'Neil?
All set, thanks.
Council Worley?
I'm sorry to ruin the momentum of everybody being all set, but I'll be very brief. Um, I have sent a couple of requests, and I have a couple more I will, will send. I just wanted to, I guess, commend former acting Mayor Gilman for, uh, filling in for Mayor Verdi while he's away. I know it was a very robust week with lots of events, and I thought you handled it very well. Um, and specifically, I was at graduation, and I thought your, your speech was very inspiring. So just wanted to, uh, like, let everyone know I thought you did a good job.
But she says it didn't go to her head.
No, I'm happy being back here with a you all, so, but thank you, Jeff. That means a lot.
Well done. You're welcome.
That's it. And, um, I have nothing to say, but thank you for sticking with us tonight, your attention, your detail, your preparation, and, um, is there a motion to adjourn? And of course, thank you to
Again.
Um, motions made by, I think, who made the motion? Council Gross, seconded by Council Gross, is a roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Gross?
Yeah.
Gross?
Yes, please.
Majota?
Yes.
Memmar?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Worley?
Thank you.
So yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Good night, everybody.
Jeff, take a shot of night, Quill, and go to bed.